Train of thought.
(laughing).
Thank you, good.
I'm in.
All right, we're live. All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 10th, 2014. We'll start with the pledge allegiance, all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board is just coming out of a manifest paperwork review. First up is the review of items for consent. In the consent folder this evening, we have the minutes for October 27th. We have the accounts payable manifest for $44,299.28. Payroll manifest for $47,119.12. An abatement for map 22 lot 82, map 15 lot 22. And an equalization assessment data certificate. I'll take a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, to approve the items for consent.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. Next on items for other business, is there anything else anybody want to add to the agenda?
Yes, there's a list of about, actually there's one item, but I think you already have it, and that's dealing with the lobby collection issue.
Yep.
Yep.
I see you added that later in the agenda, so that's fine.
Okay, we'll make sure it gets covered then. Anything else? All right, moving on, general stay as is. Next up is administrative report, new business. I don't see any new business.
Believe it or not, I have no new, sorry, I have no new business.
Yep, you don't. Moving on to old business, revenues.
Of course, the day after you accepted revenues, I received new information from DRA about our 2014 revenues. Highway block grant was adjusted to 172,167 over the 170,500 I anticipated. In that case, I'm not going to recommend any change for next year's budget, we've already adjusted for that. I wanted to let you know that we picked up a little bit there. Notable one, though, was rooms and meals distribution was up 401, 2, 401,596 from 370,000 anticipated. This is part of that restoration of rooms and meals money coming back to us, which, and I would recommend updating the 2015 proposed revenues to $402,000 in this line, which would increase the overall projected revenues by $31,946 to a new total of $2,221,564.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the figures of the town administrator as the new selectman revenue projections for 2015.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. We haven't presented the revenues to the board, to the.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, okay, so we'll send them an update.
Yeah, we'll publish that update then, so.
They only, that's only reference for them, they don't, they don't actually vote on or act on it, right?
No.
In theory.
It should help them decide.
No.
Give them the information, say here's the new revenue projections based on new information that came in.
Right.
Yeah, they're MS7, they actually do have, there is a spot for revenues.
Okay.
But, yeah, those, those two numbers from DRA, we always get a tax rate setting time. So it was a, it was a nice surprise this year to have DRA call and have rooms and meals revenue up as much as it was.
Sure it was DRA who actually called you, not somebody else?
Yes, because it was then in the DRA worksheet that Shelley sent me when we set the tax rate, so. Otherwise, your tax rate is wrong.
Great.
Yeah, which was not the case. And just as a side note, we're mentioning tax rates, bills are out, bills are getting paid, so we're starting, you know.
I've just paid mine tonight.
Yep, revenues are, revenues are coming in, which is good, so.
Next is warrant articles.
Yeah, this is the lion's share of what we need to cover on my end tonight. So, I'm gonna walk through where we are on these, and I think kind of what I took is takeaways from the last meeting. The fire department utility vehicle replacement, Chief and I still haven't finalized number and approach on that. My understanding on that was, the direction from the board was full price for whatever utility vehicle we're looking to replace.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. The paint striping unit for the highway department, $7,500.
The only thing on that, you and I discussed that, is I'd like to see some return on investment.
Yeah, I will, I will get.
Because Jack, right now, I, I think it makes sense, but there was a discussion about the breakout of the line striping versus the.
Versus the, the crosswalks, the arrows, the stops, all of that, which we, yeah, I mean, that was, you know, the, the quick and dirty on that is we spent about $6,000 this year on some of the crosswalks, stops, and words. And then, you know, they will be repainted again, so. Jack and I have started that, so I'll put the note with that that gives you all the breakdown, so we will have that. Okay, then, this one, I had a lot of suggestions, and I'm not quite sure that we came to one consistent direction on this. The pavement improvement program, continuing that. You know, what I'm throwing out as discussion is raising $225,000. This assumes that we would raise $2 million over five years, using the theory that there's about 175,000 in the operating budget. The five-year plan that Jack put together of sort of our most critical big-ticket roads came in at $2.2 million in today's prices, so. You know, and we know that, given the, given the opportunity, what we saw this year, Jack's pretty good at stretching those dollars to get a lot, as much or more done as we, you know, as possible. So that's what, so that's sort of the one, the one piece of that. Recall, we raised 170,000 in the warrant article this year, so what level makes sense? That was one scenario. You see my sort of like subnotes here, incorporate in operating budget in future years. There was, I think, some notion of, do we have this article, and I may have happily misinterpreted what was being said, too, for my own benefit, but, you know, do we write this in such a way saying that this pavement improvement program will be included in the budget in future years? Do we want to list roads as examples? You know, we know that it's non-binding, and last year, we had advice to include roads and to not include roads. And we heard both sets of advice through the process, so. We can, you know, I'm, I can list roads, or I can leave them out. And then, third point was, change the number. You know, we started with a different approach of the Pine Crest and Blue Jay as one article at 231,000. Pilgrim at, says a standalone, 164. So, you know, those two together were almost $400,000. So obviously, my suggestion of the pavement improvement at 225 backs away from that. So lots of things to think about there. Any suggestions on how you want to approach this?
Thoughts?
You want me to go first?
Sure.
All right, I've done some thinking about this. And as I said, I mean, I was the one that came up with this, should we maybe just go and ask for a warrant that covers the next five years, okay? If we ask for a separate one, which we did last year for the 170, I don't know if people are going to feel like we're digging into their pockets if we ask for more than the 170 we did last year. Okay? So it may be beneficial to ask for that, or a little less, or if it's more, make it very marginal, maybe 225 is a little big, little bit too much of a jump. Let the road plan be a number like that, where they have to approve it separate. Do you know what I'm saying? That's the way I was thinking. Dale, get us started.
Yeah.
I personally think we should simply go with a warrant article that says, here's the roads we're going to do, here's the cost of the road, or the estimates of the roads, and here's the total that we need, and see if the citizens support that. I think it's a lot easier to talk to particular roads, what has to be done on them, what has to be fixed on them, and present that as a plan, and then next year, go forward with it. I don't think we should go forward with a multi-year request for funding, because it's too open-ended. People's economy may or may not change, who knows, but people, I don't think are going to want to commit themselves to adding on to the tax rate in future years for what I'd call unknowns at the present moment. The other thing is, I think that while it may be something into, in terms of what's advisory or what have you, I think that listing the roads and to why we need that amount of money makes the most sense, so that you can directly see where the money's going and what it's going to be used for.
Right. May Bill?
No, I, I agree with Frank. I think listing the roads and just asking the voters for the money is the way to go.
As, as do I, Mr. Chairman. I think that it's a transparent process in that, and luckily, with the reduction in oil prices, we might be able to capitalize on that. But I think it's important that the people get to see what roads are being done, I think that that's, that's a.
It's a capital expense anyway, sure.
Right.
And we, I mean, we, we listed, we listed the roads.
Just making a joke.
I know. We, we listed the roads last year, but we had a little, I mean, it was listed in a way that this is what the party is worth today.
Right, roads made.
I think some things did change a little bit, but.
Sure.
You know, I, I think people will equate this to something they know. If you don't put it there, this is money they're not sure where it's going to go. So it makes sense to list the roads. We just got to make sure that if a road collapses or something, factors change, that we have the ability to readdress the money correctly.
Which, which I'm not worried about, that, that's what we did this year. I mean, basically, what I'm hearing is take the type of article that the voters approved this year.
Yeah.
Drop in the new roads with a num, with whatever, with the, okay, so that's the first part. Now, what's the appropriate number?
Well, it's something between 170 and 200.
I, I think.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You go.
Go Frank first.
I, I think that the appropriate number.
Open him off a minute.
The appropriate number is whatever the road plan says. You've got a road plan right now that you've been working with.
Uh huh.
You and the road agent have the roads prioritized, and I think within limits, and, and very strongly, you should follow what that road plan is, and, and hit the highest priority, I'll call it, roads. And I, I know that you may go a slight deviation from that one way or the other, for various good reasons, in order to try and keep the price down, that type of thing, but I think we should stick with the road plan.
And that's what, that's what we started with, and our first number coming to you was that the two big-ticket items are Pine Crest, between Moose Hollow and Hillcrest, and Blue Jay Way.
Yeah.
So that's what we, those are the two things that are at the top of our list, the 231,058. So now, if I do that, I've now exceeded the 225 I proposed, and I'm well beyond what Selectman Perry suggested.
Well then, it seems as though that's the road that everybody wants to go down, which is fine, okay? So to me, if we're going to go down the, it's kind of funny.
The road.
Go down the road, listing the roads, everyone should be separate. Because if you start, if you start piling them all together, I, I know why you don't want to do it, but if you start piling them all together, you run the risk of somebody saying, 230 is too high, no. But if you do 165 and 95, or whatever the numbers are, they may say yes and no, or no and yes.
What happens if they say yes to the, to a road that's not a high priority versus the roads that are falling apart? It becomes.
That's the risk that you're going to take, because you want to list the roads.
Well, you, yeah.
Either fund a road plan that lets you take care of them.
Yep.
Or list the roads. You want to list the roads? List the roads.
I, I would say that if they decide that they don't want to fund a road that's a higher priority, then it's fine, you come back with that next year. You do the best you can to keep the road open, or keep the road functioning, and you come back the next year and say, look, here's the reason why it's a priority.
The reason that I hesitate about listing each road in its own individual popularity contest is the nature of how, of how this community is set up. We have a lot of small roads that some people who have lived in this town 15 years may never have gone down, because they're a small road in the other side of town. Why am I going to vote to spend $133,000 on that road? So part of what our balance has to be is to find a number that's healthy, and follow that plan, and stretch it as much as we can.
But Jason.
We get off the plan if we start asking, and people cherry pick the popular ones. Well, I take Pine Crest a lot, I'll vote for that. I've never been on Blue Jay in my life, I'm not going to spend 133 for that, and then we slip.
The risk you take when you want to list the roads.
You know, I, I personally.
You have to go one way or the other.
I, I don't care which way we go, whether we list all the roads or put them into one warrant article. To me, half doesn't want one or the other, but, you know, people, I think, are smart enough and understand enough that sometimes you have to work on a road that you don't use.
Right.
Because if you defer, if you defer maintaining that road, then there will come a day when your road needs work on it, and people are going to say, well, I don't use that road, we're not going to use it. So that's an easy argument to defeat.
The, the other idea, the other concern I have is, when you do the article like we wrote this year, where we have a number, we have the sample roads, and that's where we try to go, when we have issues like, you know, the, the road into middle school failing, and we diverted some, some of the road money there, because we had to deal with that this year. When you have each road as its own sort of standalone beauty contest article, we can't move that money.
Why not?
Because we, because now we're specifically asking as a special, potentially a special article for that road. When I have a bucket that says pavement improvement, I can spend the money on those roads and the other issues that came up, and you know, this past year, Jack found some ways where we could stretch some money and get more done.
But can, can we write the article the same way, just as going to list out for, you know, $100,000 for McBowie? Proposed road is this. Again, priorities do change, can't we still change it? If something does change?
That, that's contradictory to what you said before, when you want to list the road. When you want to list the road, you have to say that you're going to do that road.
Well, we, when we listed last year's roads, we said, you know, this is what we're thinking about doing, this is what bases our plan. Thing, the, the road into the LM, into LMS had a problem, we had to divert some funding there, but we still completed every road we said we were going to do.
The problem is, if you put a list of roads down, and then you don't complete one of them, people are going to think that you are just.
That's right, and I don't think they even realize how many roads we got done this year, and the amount of time we got done, neither, which we got to figure out how to.
That's why sometimes a general warrant article is better, because it leaves a little discretion to the people that you trust to do things for you, and sometimes it's not.
I, I agree with you, but like you said, Steve, I agree with Steve when he says that 231, that's a high number. So I mean, just to put that out there, it's.
And, and that's what got me sort of saying, do I change the number down?
But one, one notion we just said, follow the plan, if these are the next two roads in the plan, it's 231. So we're going to skip them, because we can't, we were afraid to go ask the voters for it, and go to a lesser priority road for lesser money. I, this is where I'm stuck, of like, I, I think, you're saying, put the money as a, as a one lump, and then here's, here's, based on the plan, it's what we should be doing, but, you know, I know 231 is probably going to be too high.
I mean, that, that's the problem where, with, you know, I think the number's high. On the other hand, I hate to, other than for the number, completely reinvent the approach we're taking for listing each road separately. Remember that the approach that we took this year about pavement improvement program, asking for 170, the way that article was written, saying it's anticipated these, these funds will be used for these roads, and then we did those roads and some more. That article passed overwhelmingly, the voters supported it heavily. So, you know, we're often told we should be listening to the voters, so we probably, this is one of those areas where maybe we don't reinvent the wheel, but the question is, is the sticker price too high?
The, the problem is, these, this is the quoted amounts.
It is. On the other hand, we got 5 million bucks worth of backlog to do in roads. If you, and if you give the road agent 175, 200, 225, 300, he'll chip away to get the best value on everything on that plan to stretch the dollars as far as possible. You know, we've given you the samples, if you give, if you, if the voters give a different amount, Jack has the plan to stretch the, those dollars wherever it fits on that plan, so.
I think to Frank's point, put the roads out there, put the amount, what are we going to do? This is a quote that we got, if we don't ask them for that, we're not being fair to them, because we're saying, we're following the road plan, these are the next two roads, and this is what it's going to cost.
Yeah, I think we have to be upfront and say, here's the plan, here's what we accomplished last year based on what we asked for. These are the roads based on the plan, we did them, they're done.
Uh huh.
These are the next priority roads, this is what the bill is.
Well, and, and, and remember, these are engineer estimates, because we can't bid them.
No, I, I understand, and they're going to, but more likely, they're going to go either be, our engineer's been very good about the price.
Uh huh.
They've been pretty spot on, and it's, usually it's the savings side, so let's assume they're accurate enough that the voters can, you know, the worst thing that's going to happen will get another road done, or get another smaller project done, or another road maintenance project done, but.
It's the best estimates that we have right now.
I, I think we go forward with the estimate it is, that these are the next priority roads.
I, I do, too.
Laid out there, we've got to sell it.
We allowed them to vote on it, we do the best that we can to sell it. Two major projects, we're keeping within the road plan. I say we go, put it out there, recommend it, ask them for their, for their vote.
Okay, are we putting them out there together or separate?
Together.
Together, one lump.
This is the, this is the.
And just list them.
Say and ask for the 231.
Yep, 231, and, and lay it out the same way we laid out the last warrant article, and these are the roads of suggestion, and.
I'd rather them go out separate. I'd rather put Pine Crest, Moose Hollow, and Hillcrest at 97,089, Blue Jay Way at 133,969.
But then we're back, then we're back to.
Pilgrim Drive, 164,087. Approve what you may.
If you're going to ask for that whole month.
Yeah, why not just pull out, why, why don't you pull out roads two, make it two separate freestanding warrant articles, roads one, and, and I know it's a little, still a little high, but at least it's a, it's a project that we can get done.
If you list them single, I would say we put all three, because you're giving them the choice if they want to do them all, if they want to pick the high and the low, they want to pick the two lowest. You guys were the ones that said you want to put the road names. If you want to put the road names, I think they should be separate.
No, I, I said construct the same ways last year, which had the road names in it, but they were basically examples, because we knew all the things, all the factors that could happen, right? I can do it the way.
I just think it's risky to ask for 231, when you asked for 170 last year, it's a big jump.
So what happens, what happens when they only approve Pine Crest to Moose Hollow to Hillcrest, and that's it?
Well, what happens if they defeat the, if they say no to the 231, but nothing gets done, right?
Well, no, we still have the, we still have what's in the highway block grant, we'll get that.
Yeah, with the exception of that, but this is above me on the block grant.
So people say no, they say no, so what?
Right. That's why.
This is why we're asking.
I mean, our job, our job is to present to the citizens what we think is needed to run the town. You know, I don't, if you want to put them all separately, I'm fine, I'm fine with that personally, I don't care. You know, let the citizens decide, and if they decide not to do, for example, Moose Hollow to Hillcrest, fine. We come back next year with another warrant article that says we'll do Moose Hollow and Hillcrest. It's even now more critical, cost could be more, could be less, I don't know, go from there. And if it costs us 20 grand to fix it in the meantime? That's the decision of the citizens. It's the decision that they make.
Yeah. So it looks like, it looks at a direction is separate, separate them all.
Well, if we do that, I think we should go for all three then, ask for all three.
Oh, yeah, no, they all stand by themselves.
Yeah, let them stand alone.
And somehow, I then have to figure out how to write these, so if there's leftover money from these, that we can spend it on other road projects.
Why not just, why can't it be just written the same way as last year, it's just three of them? It's just three, three warrant articles based on the same word we did last year.
Ask Laura.
Okay, I'll see what I can come up with.
I mean, I, I understand, if there's money left over, we should be able to apply to the roadwork, I agree.
Right. It gets more confusing when they're split out to separate articles, but I, okay, I, if that's the direction you want to go, I will.
And I would even label in each one of those warrant articles, which one is the higher priority.
Yeah.
Like, this is the higher priority.
Note the score.
Blah, 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 blah.
Note the score, absolutely.
For this amount is the second highest priority.
Yeah, I mean, note the score, and the, and the wording, say, if this road is in a failing condition, say it's a failing condition road based on the road plan, and even reference the road plan. I mean, we should sell the road plan anyway, it should be out there.
I'm not sure you can put that in the warrant.
Well, I know, there's certain things we can't do, right? But we can all, we can certainly include it in the, in the.
You can put it in a voter's guide.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm not sure that you can put that in the warrant article itself.
That's fair.
Actually, I think you can, because there was a, there was something that stated that you can put descriptive information in the warrant article. Let me recollect from a couple of years ago, do you remember that, Jason?
I do, I do.
See, last, I, I had an opinion that said, oh, you're bordering on thin ice, so we pulled it out, so.
The, the answer is, you, you can get, you can put in as much informational until council and DRA slap your hand and say you've crossed the line from being informational, right?
We were throwing, trying to throw everything in but the kitchen sink, and they said, wow, hold up a little.
Because, I mean, you.
We went over the edge.
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, that's, okay, so I am writing three articles, listing all of these, including Pilgrim Drive, so you want, so basically, you're looking at almost $400,000 of articles, if I break them all separately.
Yeah, if the voters voted in, the voters voted in.
And we're going to try to find some way, so if there's any leftover money in each, in each, in any of those articles, we're able to apply it to another road project on the list.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, why are you so squirrely about that, in the sense that the warrant article we wrote last year?
Was one article.
I know it was one article, but it gave, all you're doing is instead of saying three roads, saying one road, it's the same factors. So why would it be a problem? I'm just, I'm, I.
I'll agree with you now.
I'm, I'm just wondering why, I mean, I guess when it's a lump sum, and you list four roads, something, I, I guess that's, there's a gray area there, but I'm not sure.
I mean, I can write them all separately, I mean, it just, it feels a little odd. I mean, basically, I'll have to see if the town votes to raise appropriate the sum of, you know, insert a number here, for the purpose of road pavement projects, it's anticipated these funds will be used at the cost of repairs of.
Right.
Blue Jay Way.
Right.
And then I'll have the next one, and then I'll have the next one.
Should be getting pretty good at writing those by the time you're done.
It's amazing what copy and paste will do.
And the street names, and the dollar amount, and that's it.
Then you'll find out exactly how far they're willing to go.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and, you know, we don't risk the whole project, we potentially can get some of it out of it.
All right, okay.
I mean, but I will go back to, we have to figure out a way to sell and educate the, the residents of what we're trying to do with the roads. I, I know we did some things last year, we got to do some more, and we got to make sure we have plans out there.
I think showing the update and showing the bang we got for the buck this year, and again, you know, we sat here last year, and everybody was a little squirrely about the 170, oh, you know, I'm not sure the voters will support that.
And we were surprised.
And, and the voters supported it, so. I don't want to push the goodwill too far, but I think we did get a message that people, you know, want to invest something in our roads. All right.
All right, so moving on.
Hey, speaking of roads.
Albuquerque Extension Engineering.
Oh.
This is just a result of the last year's vote.
Last year's vote.
Bringing forward this, to continue the program, okay.
And if you click on the snazzy little link that's embedded there, I did get a, a better update, this is still in draft, he's almost done reworking it, from a engineer, about what the three segments would look like. Yes, the notable thing is anticipate design and permitting for this project to be in the range of 140,000 to 180,000 dollars. So, you know, in his notes, kind of explain what's in, what's out on that, that's the lion's share, that's doing the whole thing. That's doing, you know, if you remember, we looked at three pieces. We looked at a new piece from one oh two to the corner in Cutler. We looked at a section of widening Cutler, and we looked at a segment of, um, fro- of extending Albuquerque from Page, across Page into, uh, Cutler. We have construction estimates. Um, again, there are various caveats with this, but, um, the construction estimates range from one point four to one point seven million dollars for all three phases. So, with that one forty to one eighty range that he provided, you'll see that, at the moment, I...
Does that also take into consideration the purchase of land?
Um, no, it does not. No, that's one of his footnotes there, is that, um, the, um, it, it, it does not include, um, attempt to include acquisition and easement negotiations. Um, and then, um...
Do we have any idea what that would cost us?
I was gonna say, don't, don't we have some land in there already?
We, uh, uh, we have, we have the land for what is, in this notion called Segment Three. So that's the extension from Page to Cutler. We have land for that. Um, we should have existing right-of-way through the sort of center part of Cutler. We should have sufficient right-of-way through there. And then, the unknown is the new, the new extension after the curve out to, um, out to one oh two, depending on the routing on that. Although, what has been identified right now is state-owned land.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I knew, they brought something up in anticipation of this conferential.
That's what it's marketing, is, that's what it's for, I write that later.
Right, so, you know, the, the hope is that it would be little to none. You will have hope, you may have some incidental pieces, depending on where you get width through there. Um, this plan does not talk about, um, any changes, although you would expect them, to both ends of the existing Cutler Road. That would be something we have to talk through, the process of whether you write in, write out, on those, cul-de-sac them, whatever you do. So, yeah, those are the variables that are unknown. I mean, that's where you go from a concept plan to a real plan, and that's why you have the variability.
And you're saying that the estimated engineering cost is a hundred and sixty?
Yeah, um, he gave me a range of one forty to one eighty. So therefore...
You cut it in the middle.
I picked one sixty.
So obviously, this is to get a number.
This is to get, th- this is to get, um, this is to get through design, design and permitting estimates. So we would be able to then go forward, uh, so th- th- this work would be the planning design permitting needed to have the project design ready for construction. Uh, this would go with an engineer's cost estimate for proposed improvements to, uh, to plan funding. So in theory, if we did this, next year, we could come back and say...
Need twelve million dollars.
We, we're, we're ready to build this, and we need one point six million dollars to build all of it.
All right, 'cause that was where my question was leading. Do we have any idea what it could cost?
Yeah, um, one, uh, one point four to one point seven million.
Okay.
And he's broken the segments out, so, you know, your biggest ticket item is the completely new road section. That's going from the curve out to one oh two. Um, which is three-quarters of a million to just under a million dollars. The widening of Cutler, about four hundred to four seventy, and the new construction, about three hundred to three sixty. So those are the segments. And you may decide that if this proves viable, and if people are interested, you chip away at it in segments. Although, my view at this point, looking at the way this is done, hate to say it, but the segment that I would focus on first is the expensive segment.
But you have to, you've got no choice.
Right. Because if you don't do that segment, doing the others are ridiculous. You know, you're building a road, you're building a, a new segment of road you don't need, um, and you're widening the road to dump it into a residential neighborhood that you're trying to avoid doing, so, you know.
And this for engineering cost, and it will go out to bid.
What?
This will go out to bid.
Uh, yeah, it would have to, it would go out to bid.
All right.
Yep.
Moving on, fire air packs.
Fire air packs, I think we talked about that last time. I don't think there were any open issues on that.
No.
Replenish Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. The human ser- I don't think we had any, I mean, that just is a replenishment. The direction I got for a human service agency is, I'm correct, that, um, we, uh, wanted to start from the full agency request?
That's what was suggested. Go ahead, Frank.
I wanna go back to the, uh...
The, the upgrade extension.
Well, what happened if we just paid Hudson for a light at the end of Page?
Um, the state, the state wouldn't install it, doesn't matter. It's not, it's not just the cost of paying Hudson for a light.
State doesn't want that.
Um, the state won't issue a signal warrant because the traffic volume isn't great enough, the angles of...
They're gonna issue a signalization warrant for us?
They might. We'll, there's no guarantee, but what, what this looks at at one oh two is there, you build a much clearer, better sightline, safer intersection. That's part of the other issue at Page Now, is angles and sightlines. Um, I can't, you know, the, the, the unknown in all of this is going to be, right now, if the traffic volume, the, the, if, if, if the traffic volumes of one oh two will generate sufficient activity for a signal warrant from the state. Uh, and...
Well, there was discussion the state has, and I need to investigate this, as to whether they were gonna build a bridge over the river. And they were gonna use, no, seriously, they were gonna use that...
Yeah.
That property to do that. Now, if that is gonna be done, then you tie into that.
And, and th- you end up, that's the conversation that, I mean, if we're trying to get the access to the state land, that's why that phase is an important phase to figure out. And it also will impact how you design it. If someday, the bridge is coming, I mean, that first, that first piece coming off of one oh two is built a lot like, um, you know, I mean, I'm picturing it being built a lot like sort of the Roundstone Drive, you know, going up to, going up to the airport access road. You know, that's kind of the way. So whatever we build is consistent with whatever future vision. I mean, that bridge is not gonna be, you know, that's thirty-plus years out. You know, it's not in the short-term plans.
I know. The only thing I'm thinking, though, is the state's not gonna let you get away with, um, putting your own road in there, and then they're gonna have to replace it with something.
Right, it's gonna have to be consistent with a design that they would expect in the future.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
All right. So we're back at, uh, human services?
Yep.
Right, I think you were saying the plan was to present the full package.
The plan was to present the full agency request, rather than the number we've been carrying for five years that was, okay.
The forty-nine.
The forty-five, yeah, which is, okay. Now, here's the other interesting question on that. Whether, do you want that article to be everything that's come in as a qualified agency, or the full request from the agencies that the town has been supporting in the past? Because those are, those are two different things.
Twenty-eight thousand we were asking, it's the ones we've been supporting.
No, that's, I, I took, that's, I took everything that came in. Now, you know, that includes agencies that we have not funded in the past. Um, and actually, I can wipe part of that out. Um, so that act, tha- tha- that number will be a little bit less. Call it twenty, twenty-six-two. I double count, I, just looking here, I double counted. But Lamprey Health is asked, we have not supported them in the past. Court-appointed special advocates, American Red Cross. Those are all in that total.
Have we asked these agencies for any type of report as to what the amount of service is given to our town?
Yeah, they all...
Tell you how many people from which field and everything.
Yeah, yeah, they all come with reports, and, you know, um, I've copied and shared everything that I have for all of them. So they all, they all have some level of service here.
So what's, what's the board's pleasure?
I'm, I'm okay sending, let, uh, ask the voters what they think, and we'll find out.
All right.
Okay. Um...
I'm sorry, wage plan.
Wage plan implementation. Uh, this is revisiting, and thi- this was, you know, your first year of the implementation plan. Talked about a thirty thousand dollar of, you know, on the multi-year implementation, so...
That's somewhere, right?
Yep.
What have you other thought about this?
Okay. Um, I realize this is probably not a successful suggestion, but, um, Stormwater Management Trust Fund. We proposed this last year, um, in anticipation of the allegedly upcoming, um, rules at EPA, which will, when put in place, have the potential to be much more costly and burdensome to us. Um, it failed at this year's town meeting. Um, however, the most notable thing, and the logical question somebody should ask me, is, "So what's the latest update from EPA?"
Nothing. That's my bet. What's the latest update?
It says right there, unfortunately, no updates still.
Yeah, there's, there's still no progress on it. There's no, I mean, there was a big flurry of activity a year and a half ago, and then it kinda quieted down. So I can't tell you when this is coming.
I, I would say, can it.
Yeah, I would say can it too, but the only question I have is, how do we, what happens if they do?
I'm sure they'll be tired.
Well, eh, if, if they do, i- i- it appears that one of the messages that they got loud and clear from all of the comments was, when they finally propose something, there's gotta be a decent lead time to allow towns to mobilize for their town meeting processes. So they have now missed, eh, for just about everybody, the window for two thousand fifteen.
They're probably gonna miss sixteen, too.
Yeah.
You know, if, I mean, the other towns are gonna miss it because their town meetings are gonna be in Ju- uh...
Yeah.
You know, for June.
Exactly. So we're, um, yep. So the consensus is to cut it?
I would say, I personally believe, cut it. And when they come up with something, fine, we'll address it at the town.
I agree.
I mean, I've been hearing they're gonna come up with this for how many years now?
Two thousand eleven?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, well, two thousand eight is, it's been, yeah, I mean, w- we're, we're in, you know, the year, uh...
Well, I know when I, when I did the first year, that was the year they were supposedly changing. Mine was supposedly the last year...
Yeah.
On against whatever it was.
Yeah, we're, you know, next year I'll be filing, like, year thirteen of our five-year plan.
Right, exactly.
So, okay, that's fine. I wanted to bring it up. I'd be, part of what I did here is I went back through old articles and wanted to bring stuff up again. All right, um, next one I received is a suggestion from board member, um, notion...
You can say it was me. The next three are my suggestions. And I, I would just say that I, it, they all came out from doing our walkthrough...
Right.
Um, at the Highway Department, the recycling building, and then the, the police one is something that's been on my mind for a while, so...
Yeah, um, notion of a carport canopy for, uh, police vehicles.
I can give you a good rationale for it, but...
I'm just surprised because, no, I'm laughing because I talked to the chief about doing this, probably, uh, two or three weeks ago.
Because it came up in the Budget Committee tour, too.
Right.
Yeah, and I di- I heard that, and I started laughing, 'cause I was going, th- th- let me just explain my reason for suggesting it. First off, you know, when, and we're talking, there's two different concepts going on. There's a carport for all the cars that are parked there, at least for the frontline cars, at least, because there are assets in those cars that during the summertime, I literally, when I go into work on them, you can't touch anything. It's that hot, how hot the car interior is, in the direct sunlight. With the time, you know, they get covered with snow, you gotta clear them off, a whole bunch of stuff. Transferring things in and out of cars, especially when it's raining, out of the carport. So just being able to extend those areas and keep them out would just, you know, make it a whole lot, uh, a whole lot more sensible, from, uh, you know, protecting some of the assets. Some of the old problems, we get a lot of UV, a lot of stuff gets worn down, 'cause it's always in direct sunlight, so this would just help on that wear and tear.
You're gonna do that for twelve grand?
The price is the first one, it's the price, so I don't know if that's a, that's what they're coming.
What they're talking about is the same type of building as, uh, Jack has down at the highway.
Yeah. We're, this is, this is, yeah.
You gotta make it look like this building.
Uh, le- I, I was considering this a lean-to, which is just basically the roof, carport style, right? Like you see down in Florida and stuff like that.
Yeah, we, we, we probably...
You gotta trim it and finish it to at least look like this.
I, the price is the first one, it's in the price. I don't know if that's a...
I can explain what the price is, if, and how we actually talked about designing it, which is basically expansion of what we did at the gas station. Uh, so, you know, basically pitched roof, you know, four, four posts, um, covering four parking spots.
So the frontline cars.
So covering, yeah.
So, my question is, is, I, I understand, like you say, the cars sitting in, the cars shouldn't be sitting here.
There's always at least two car, one car or two cars sitting there at all times.
Okay.
So...
So you're gonna ta- take four, four parking spots for two cars?
There's four parking spots anyway. So all I'm saying is cover where their, where their assigned parking spots are.
I, I guess, I guess where I'm going with it is, we always hear how many miles they put on these police cars. So in that, and, and in this conversation, we're saying, saying that the cars are sitting there. So either we're putting a lot of mileage on it, or the cars are sitting there.
The cars are running sixteen-hour days. So on the off-hours, they're parked somewhere, whereas in the sunlight or, or dark, they're, they're, they're in the weather somewhere.
Okay.
And I'm al- and also, we were talking about covering the Sally Port they already had today, which they have a garage where it's supposed to be a pull-in and the transfers.
Yeah.
Can't do anything today.
Right.
'Cause it can't fit in the garage. 'Cause it's storage and stuff, and I know that's not even factored into this. That was my other thing, was, how do we extend the coverage from that, that garage, so then we, when they're, when they're in doing station duty, and the two cars are parked outside, they're still in protected weather, too, and protected from the weather.
But, but you are correct. In theory, you know, all four spaces, it will not be filled with vehicles simultaneously.
But there are assigned spots, and it'd be very difficult to have, just have two, and they, oh, you can float in and out of the dam, out of the things, it just wouldn't make sense.
I'm still gonna be amazed if you can build that for twelve grand.
Yeah, I...
Amazing.
Again, it depends on the size and stuff, but, I mean, there's not really not a lot to it.
Yeah. Um, I, that, that...
My guess is that's, that's Jack, and his crew doing it, and its materials only.
It's, yeah, it's largely materials. Although, uh, to be fair, I di- I did get that ballpark price from two different directions, from, you know, I got it from Jack on his end, and, you know, Kevin made a few phone calls with some, got some ballpark numbers. That, that's, that's the area where both of them independently came through, so...
Is it gonna look like it belongs on this building?
Well, I think that's, so, let's, the delivery is, if we're gonna go forward, let's make sure it does look like the bu- belongs to the building.
Why does it have to look like the building?
Because it would be foolish to put something out there that looks like a bond structure on a building like this.
You don't add it to the building.
It's actually freestanding on the parking lot side. It's not even planted to the building. At least the, the four that we're talking about. I agree. If you're gonna do something over the Sally Port, you wanna make sure it blends in with the architecture of the building.
So now we're worried about covering the vehicles, but you gotta walk outside to get into the building anyway?
No, I'm, go stop where I said. When I originally talked about this, it was, in addition to covering the four cars, it's also extending the Sally Port extension.
Okay, so it's gonna be more than twelve grand.
I, I agree. It's first one's in the price. And we just talked about it, what, Wednesday?
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
You're gonna do it, do it right.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
'Cause if you're not gonna do it right, I'm not gonna support it.
Yeah, agreed. So anyway, that's the call. Let's, let's see if you can find him the number.
Okay, well, now, how, how critical is it to you that there's the Sally Port extension? Because we've been shuffling around, sticking this several places...
Personally?
Yeah.
Uh, I think the Sally Port is... I, I think it's more critical, actually. But, that's just me.
Okay. You know, 'cause wha- what we had talked about here was, if this kind of thing's being built, not butting it up against the building, but, you know, everybody's trying to fi- figure out the best place, the best place to put this. And, 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 you know, I'm gonna be completely honest on my end for a minute. You know, the chief and I have talked about this on and off for the past couple of years.
Before?
What?
No, he's gonna say their priorities don't match ours. They have other...
No, no, and, 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 I want you to know, this, th- this is something that we have talked about. We haven't put a lot of thought or recommended it, because we, we were wrestling with other department priority needs. Um, we've struggled to buy cruisers. So I felt kinda funny asking for something to cover the space where the cruisers would be. So, um, you know, but...
Well, that's fine, but the argument still is, is that the, the cruisers are being weathered because they're exposed. You know, I'm, I'm, again, the reason why I brought this, maybe selfish from my perspective, trying to protect the assets that are... You know, I'm, I'm, again, the reason why I brought was maybe selfish from my perspective, trying to protect the assets that are sitting on the top of the gash. Right, but.
I guess I'll go to, go to Nashville or Manchester. They don't cover all their cars. And I mean, they have a lot of them. We, when they transport.
Buy some cardboard things that you can put up in your windshield.
Sure, that would work too.
I just, it's just, I'm just, you know what I mean?
Drive by a London area, every one of their vehicles parked behind their building.
Get, get a number and ask the voters. If, if they wanna, they wanna spend the money, they will. If they don't, they won't.
I personally would prefer to save that request for a higher priority item. So that we give the voters, you know, we don't wanna throw everything at them. I, I think it would be important that we look at priority items in those, that the departments list as priorities so that, um, in, in other words, I don't want this to take away from another one that we really would, would rather see passed. I don't wanna.
I, I, I agree.
I don't wanna to dilute the, the priority items.
The, this is a brain, this is brainstorming of all the warrants, right? This is something out there. They said we did last year, we had a whole bunch of warrants out there. If the board doesn't support it, then it gets axed.
Yeah.
It's taken off.
I mean, I just, I, I, it's certainly.
Make a motion, take it off. I'll move that, we remove this from the, uh,
Yeah.
I'll move, um, remove all of the item for the canopy.
For consideration?
No, just as I'm, I'm making a motion.
Right. Remove it for, for, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second for the discussion.
My discussion would, point would be, if we leave it on there, it's to come back with a number that's going to translate being connected to the building and building a viable structure that belongs on this facility site.
But I'm hearing that it's not a priority, uh, of the police department. If that's in fact correct, that's fine. Then why collect the information and?
Why waste cycles, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, and look, I'm the one who asked her to be on it. I'm, I'm in agreement with you. If the police department doesn't want it, it'll be it.
It, well, the, the police department would like it. However, to be fair, the police department would like it after having cruisers, after having tasers, after having a training program.
But where are all the other warrant articles for the police department on the warrant list? I don't see anything else for the warrant, any, anything else.
But we, we agreed to go back to the cycle of one to one for the cruisers. And that's what's, and that's what we're working towards. There's one cruiser being bought in two thousand fourteen, two cruisers are in the budget for fifteen.
Yeah, I don't understand what the car issue is neither.
So I'm not sure that the car issue is, uh, an issue that still remains open unless they, you know.
We've, be- because our history the past couple of years is we've talked about car issues at this time of year and then we've not really executed that plan later in the year because of the circumstances we faced.
The car in two thousand fourteen is here. It's here. And the budget can still maintain, it still has in it the two cars for two thousand fifteen. And assuming the budget committee continues to do what they have suggested they're going to do, then it's there in the budget. So. Alright, further discussion on the, on the motion? Hearing none, all is in favor of removing it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
Stained? Motion carries three, two, zero. And again, I'm against, because I, I'd like to see what the total number looks like.
Period.
It's not worth the effort, it's not worth the effort.
I, I agree, John, I just.
No, it's alright, yep.
It, I, I, I will say though, I, that, you know, th- there's, th- there's nothing that will stop us of, over the next year, kinda chipping away at a better plan. I mean, I, this is what we threw out over two days. I don't disagree that it's, we could use it.
I would be more interested in making sure that we have an effective operational Sally Port. Because that's an officer safety issue to me.
I agree.
And I agree. I mean, that's the one where I thought extending the Sally Port today and getting coverage over two cars parked in that Sally Port area would, would make sense. I mean, I, maybe the question is, go back, figure out what that would actually look like and come back and say, here's what it would be and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to consider for this, uh, cycle, whether it's a warrant article or not, I, I don't know. But what can we do to make that Sally Port effective? Um, right now, it's too short to get the vehicles in because of storage needs and everything else, I guess.
And not even that, when there's evidence in there too, they lose access to it altogether. But we can't solve that problem, but if we can maybe improve the situation when they get into the building.
Yeah.
So, that's a little, I think that's a little bit more investigated. We took this one off, but let's.
That's fine. We'll take a closer look, see if there's something viable we can come back with.
Next, paving and solid waste for facility. I don't know. I asked, we went through the tour, the road, the parking lot's falling apart. It's gotta get done at some point in time. So my, I asked for the estimates that we could consider it for this year. That's, and that's an estimate we got from.
DLB paving.
DLB paving.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
To do the whole thing?
Yeah, the parking area.
Uh, yeah, to upper level and then first little tier of the driveway headed down, downhill. Rest of it should be fine. So, the, the.
Just to clarify, parking area?
From recycling building towards the fence, to the transfer. So recycling building.
Yep.
And the, the disposal building up to the fence.
Are you?
All inside the fence?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That's a good price.
I say, I say go forward with it.
To me, this is one of the things, uh, our residents use the facility, they know where the issues are, they support, they don't support it. It, it, to me, it feels, we should bring it forward. So we're okay with bringing it forward, it sounds like?
Yeah, I'm good with it, yeah.
And then the next one obviously is the part, is the fire department parking lot. And everybody, again, if you've been there.
That's been a mess for thirty years.
In front of the fire depart- in front of the fire trucks.
Wh- when was the last time that that got the patch job or something?
We patched a little bit two years ago over, I think we did what? We did over on the side between, uh, the station and the Old Town Hall.
And then the time before that, it was patched, I think it was two thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's a mess.
And it was only a small patch because they couldn't.
I mean, it's a big, it's a big ticket item, but it's also, like I said, it's.
So, so. We had to, they, they had to do it back in two thousand because it almost broke the spring off one of the, the new tank engine three.
It's, it's still a mess.
When it came out the door.
Is that the complete parking lot?
That's the complete, all the way around.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we talked about doing just from the front of the building towards the road, from the, from the church to the there. But again, you know, just delaying what else is going on.
Yeah, I mean, they, the whole place, the whole thing is a mess.
Oh, it is. Absolutely, it is.
Again, and people who pull in there are, are, are seeing this, so.
Good useful warrant article.
Yeah. Exactly. Alright, so we're okay with leaving it on there for now, at least at this point?
Do you wanna take a break for a moment and we've, go to public comment? I, these are my, uh, well, actually, let me, before we break, this is all I have for monetary articles.
Okay, the rest of the procedural ones.
Right, the rest are other.
Alright.
Am I missing anything that anybody else has thought of for monetary articles?
Nope. Tax cap.
Yep, 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 yep.
Oh my god.
That need an appropriation. If you wait, that, keep going. I've dredged up goes from the past. You'll see it on that list.
Alright, so why don't we go ahead? We'll move to, we'll move to open the floor for public input. The time is, uh, seven o'clock. Anyone with to speak, please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen. Chris Pescucci, Twelve Colonial. Thank you for that conversation. Actually, it was impressive. I, I actually enjoyed it. Um, we, we hear from some people in town now how we're afraid to, uh, create warrant articles, or afraid to give choices to the people in the town, afraid that, you know, people are gonna say no, afraid, afraid, afraid. Um, I've always had the opposite thought that just give people the choices. Some of the phrases we heard tonight, exact quotes, was transparent process, be upfront with the voters, present to the voters what we think is needed to run the town, the voters will choose, we have to figure out a way to sell and educate the residents, ask the voters if they wanna spend the money. I, I mean, that's music to most people's ears. I believe in freedom and liberty and, and I really appreciate the conversation, especially on the roads too. People do, I believe, understand, uh, the importance of maintaining the roads, even if they don't drive on them. They understand the maintaining, the fire department, even if the house doesn't catch fire. They understand maintaining the police department, even if they don't have an intruder in the house. So, uh, keep those warrant articles coming. Um, in reference to our last meeting, uh, Mr. Brunello, I'd like to ask you, uh, when you were presenting the road agent appointment, uh, warrant article at last year's deliberative, was it your intent at that time to appoint the currently elected road agent?
You're asking me, yes?
Yes.
And I made it very clear when I said it too.
Oh, it was, okay. You see.
What I said, what I had said all along was that we had a, an effective road agent and I saw no reason why that road agent would not become the appointed road agent.
Okay, and, and that's fine, uh, because I went back and I watched the deliberative and, um, you know, read some minutes and more conversations and, and it wasn't made that clear. Maybe it was in your mind. Um, so just to recap, uh, that warrant article did pass by three votes, which it was a clear win. I was against changing, uh, our, from going from elected to appointed, but I realized the voters spoke and my side lost. And I accepted that. But we also heard in this room that, um, you know, you guys need to, uh, really pool all your talents to pick the absolute best person, that it's, uh, it's a crapshoot when the voters pick something, but you have a calculated method. Um, I mean, there was a lot of, uh, discussion about that, that warrant, so I think people in the town weren't assured. Now, just to be clear, I, I think our current road agent is fantastic and I'm one hundred percent confident as long as he kept running, he would have kept getting elected overwhelmingly by the people of this town, even if he had five people running against him. Um, so thi- this is not about our current road agent, this is about the process here at the board of selectmen table. Uh, because last, last week was kind of comical watching, um, you know, Mr. Brunello, when you made the motion to appoint a current road agent without, um, going out for applications. Uh, I mean, it was some squirming at the table and some smiles. People clearly looked uncomfortable because he knew what you were doing wasn't, uh, wasn't right. You know, by, by going out.
I don't think you can actually make it con- make a statement that you don't, that this board was uncomfortable what they did.
I could, that, because that was the perception I got, so I, I am very, I, I am very comfortable in making that statement. Um, you guys used the example of, that's the way you did it with the talent treasurer. Well, it is indeed the way you did it. You changed it from, um, elected to appointed and you just, uh, you, you just appointed without going out to look. But I noticed you didn't use the example, that's the way you did it with the, uh, fire chief, because that's not the way you did it. With the fire chief, you changed it from, got the voters to change it from elected to appointed and the first thing you did was you put it out uh, for, uh, uh, open process and you got applications. So I just wanna point out that you could.
You have one more minute.
You could pick and choose, you know, examples to try and prove your case. It's clearly a case of the ends justify the means. And, um, again, I wanna emphasize, our current road agent is an excellent choice and he would have still been our road agent if he would have left the process. So this whole process you went through was really for no reason because we ended up with the same result. And even the example you used, that if, uh, he ever did choose to retire, uh, you would be prepared at that point, but it was clearly stated in the RSA anyway, that you could have at any time chosen to appoint the road agent. This is just me coming back and kind of closing the circle on this whole issue. Some of us knew that this is, was gonna be the end result anyway, when you guys were presenting it, but some people in town, I truly believed, did not believe that. That they believed you were going to go through the process, that you gave the perception you were going to do. Thank you.
And just to resp- you can just go sit back down if you want, but I, just to respond to the fire chief comment, I think if you go back far enough when we talked about it, I actually indicated that the elected fire chief would become, in my support, would be support, would support him to become the fire chief. If situations weren't what situations were, that may have would have happened. I don't know. But I had always supported the current elected fire chief at the time.
Fair enough. It's about the process, not about each individual person. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close, uh, public input at seven oh six. Continuing on with our agenda.
Alright, back to warrant articles. Now we're at non-monetary. A couple from changes in legislation this year, um, and these are ones I just kinda cherry. The first two, uh, they what, HVAC?
Yeah, it's just come on.
Yeah, it is, it is. That's when you go from hot to cold. Yes, we have that. It's the.
Is it the filters or?
No, it's, um, a, it's another, it's another problem that, it's fine, but it just, we have to.
A dead animal.
Yeah, it, wh- wh- when you switch from hot to cold, it, we, we have this a couple of times a year, so.
Okay.
Yep, it's, yep.
Get those little scent things.
Take the blades off, throw some.
They're like fifty cents.
Yeah, thanks.
Thirty-four a buck.
Um, alright, cemetery lot sales. Um, first one is pawn sale cemetery lots. Legislative body may vote to determine whether funds received shall be deposited to the general fund of the town or deposited with trustees or trust funds for maintenance of cemeteries.
Where they go now?
Uh, right now, they go to, uh, they go to the general fund with the exception of a portion that is specifically dedicated for perpetual care that goes to the trustees.
How much do we dedicate to perpetual care?
Very little.
Are we still getting a hundred dollars per lot?
Yeah, for perpetual care.
No, I thought for the sale of the lot, it was a hundred dollars.
No, we, we charge more than that for the lot. Um, off the top of my head, I don't know what it is. It's a, um, we sell very few lots.
I was gonna say, if it's only a hundred bucks.
Yeah, sign me up.
Yeah, I know.
We should put a rush in on.
Well, you wanna use it early?
No. Um.
You'll never get it cheaper than a hundred bucks if that's all it is.
That's perpetual care. Um, my sense is that we sell, eh, on this one, I brought it up because it was a legislative change. Practically, we sell such few lots, I don't think this is even worth wasting the breath on discussion at town meeting. What we're doing is fine. You know, I mean, we have very little perpetual care money. We spend something like seven thousand dollars a year on cemetery maintenance. None of these are big ticket items. So, um, I don't see a huge gain one way or the other. But, I, it was on the list.
Okay.
Um, and now, if somebody feels dramatically different, please let me know. So, okay, um, then I may retire that one.
Okay.
Um, governing body approval of subdivision streets. Um, this one allows municipality in which the planning board is subdivision approval authority to transfer to the governing body the authority to approve plans showing the extent to which and the manner in which streets within subdivisions will be graded and improved. Transfer of authority must be granted by the legislative body and in the absence of such a transfer, authority remains with the planning board. Real interesting concept.
No, thanks.
Yeah, except for the fact that I would also say, why don't you sit on the sidelines for a few years and let the fallout from this take place? Um, I think a conversation that I had with Selectman Byron earlier this year pointed out that there's a big problem with this in that the planning board has the authority to, uh, pay for engineering oversight and it doesn't appear the governing body does.
Right.
So, until this, this language is modified, probably worth staying on the sidelines. I would say that conceptually, this, it kinda makes some sense to have the governing body through its road agent participate more in the road process. Because, you know, once the planning board's done, the planning board can design whatever they want, then we all get the road. So if, depend, if, you know, if we're not on the same page, it's an issue, this is not the vehicle to get there.
Is the road agent part of the approval process? He is, right?
Yeah, no, it, it's sort of set up that the planning.
It's informal.
The planning board, the planning board's approach right now is in its own silo until it's time to, you know, with their own engineers, until it's time to accept, then they hand it off and then it becomes our problem thereafter.
At that point, it's accepted.
And right, and that, and it's accepted.
Only if the board is selecting it.
Right.
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 But at that point then, you know, it should be a policy of the board of selectmen that the road agent should review.
Right.
That's what I was gonna say.
Right, the, the difficult.
At that point, it's too late.
Eh, eh, right, and that's the problem. At thi- at that point, it i- it is too late. If there's, sometimes there's sort of like crossed wires between what a road agent would like for having the road and maintaining it for the hereafter and what the planning board would like based on what they think is a good design or what an ordinance written at some point in the past says.
Right.
The, the biggest issue usually with, um, road agents and layout by planning board is configuration to allow the, uh, plowing of snow to be done relatively easy.
Right, correct.
Why, why would they approve streets or plans or subdivisions without running it by the road agent?
You run the planning board.
That's where it used to be.
I was wondering, I thought they did.
A lot of times you didn't get anything back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But.
So how do we, how do we make sure it does get, how do we make sure it does happen though?
You can't. You have to have the planning board put that into their, um.
Bylaws, whatever.
Right, or, or subdivision plans. Right, or sub, or subdivision plans.
We're encouraging, I mean, we, we have greater collaboration, but we do it despite, I mean, the rules don't compel it, we do it because it's the right thing to do. So, um, anyway, um, I think we can probably retire that one too. Um, watch how that either gets corrected or withdrawn this year. Now, the next one, actually, um, the trustees of trust funds have requested, uh, this article. Uh, to see if the town will vote pursuant to RSA thirty-five-nine-A-two to authorize the trustees of trust funds to pay for capital reserve fund investment management services and other expenses incurred from capital reserve fund income. Uh, no vote by the town to rescind such authority shall recur within five years of the original adoption of this article. Uh, basically, they, they have, the trustees, uh, invest our capital reserve funds. Uh, this gives them the authority to, um, pay for any investment management services out of the proceeds. So they, you know, right now, if they were to invest in something, um, other than, you know, a generic CD, something that had like, that had a, uh, management fee associated with it, we would have to fund it out of the general fund. And this just says, hey, if it's throwing off enough money to generate a return, it can throw off enough money to pay for management services. Now, this is not something at the moment that they're anticipating doing. We have not given them tons and tons of capital reserves, uh, but this lays the groundwork in the future. Um, I think they are looking at how to diversify the portfolio. They do have a little bit more flexibility for investment than our treasurer does, for instance, so.
Okay.
From prior years, um, I dug up some old chestnuts that had been on our list in the past. Um, old chestnut number one is the tax cap. Um, and, um, although, to be fair, I think what I dug up was, um, and pasted in here was, at some point, this became a, shall we study the impact of adopting the tax cap rather than the actual tax cap itself? Um, I think that was the last, before this was killed off in the past, I think this was like the last form that it was alive in. But anyway, the concept's there, you can study it, you can propose doing it, you can drop it altogether.
I personally think we should present to the voters a proposal to see if they would like to implement a tax cap.
I absolutely disagree. I think that in a town, tax caps were not designed for town government, town government, you have direct democracy, you have the people that go to vote for a budget directly in the cities and some of the towns, you do not. And that's where the tax cap was designed for. You put a tax cap in a town that has direct democracy, what you are doing is removing the voter's authority to vote and, and their right to vote for the budget they seem, they, if, or vote for an amount that they seem appropriate, uh, they want to vote for. And, and I, I think it's an infringement on the voter's rights in the town.
Well, it's not a infringement on the voter's rights because it doesn't get implemented unless the voters ask for it, number one. Number two, what happens is it allows the voters to establish guidelines for both the executive branch of the government, which is the board of selectmen, as well as the budget committee and gives direction to them saying, you are to construct budgets within these certain parameters. And it's up to the citizens, and if that's what the citizens want, then that's great.
Um, so your suggestion, your, your suggestion is to go forward with the, ask the citizens if they want us to establish one, we're not going to find a number or anything.
I didn't-
Not establish one.
I didn't even propose it.
He said, "study it."
Right, right.
No, I didn't say study it.
Oh.
Well, that's what this one, that's what this one said.
I'm sorry, uh, what that says, I'm saying we should go forward with it.
Okay, so the question, but then, then we need to help define a number, what would be a valid number? If we're, if we're, if we're not going to go ask, do we want to study it, and we're gonna say, we're gonna come forward with a tax cap-
Say a two percent.
Five percent.
If you want, if the board wants to go five percent, then the board goes five percent, I mean, that's fine.
And it, it's, it's a not to exceed, right? So i- if we say our tax, we're gonna set a tax cap at five percent, it's never gonna go more than five percent, but it's never, you know, our ideal is never gonna go higher than, what's our average, what's our increase this year?
In, in Manchester, they had a tax cap, and look, it was a nightmare this year. They had to, because they had issues, they voted to override their tax cap. It was a political nightmare for weeks on end. It, it, they had argument after argument after argument. And now, in the city this year, went, uh, at this election, the city asked for a charter amendment to amend the tax cap to allow for consideration of increased valuation, because they knew that this tax cap restricted them too much. And the problem was, the voters didn't understand it and they voted it down. Even the mayor, who was in favor of the tax cap, vote, was in favor of amending it. This is the problem with the tax cap.
This reminds me of Prop. Two and a half down in Mass.
Right.
And every, every community was overriding it because it basically, they didn't realize what they were getting themselves into.
So, and they, the taxpayers have the right to vote directly on their budget, that we don't need to add another layer of restrictions.
It's only a restriction on, uh, the selectmen and the budget committee, it's not a restriction on the citizens. They have every right to vote anytime they want to supersede the tax cap, to increase beyond the tax cap limits that were imposed if they accepted this warrant article, and to, uh, to add into the budget as much as they want. They also have, the other hand, to subtract from the budget as much as they want.
But it's harder for them to do that. Once you put a tax cap in, if the, even if they feel the need, it is harder for them to do that because who, who puts on the warrant for the voters to override?
Who puts on the voters?
Who would hap- who puts it?
It's done at the deliberative session.
So it's gotta go in as a warrant to override.
No, no, th- th- there's no, unlike the Prop. Two and a half and some of the others, um, the, the override is a simple, a simple majority amending the budget at the deliberative session. So, um, you, you, there's no formal override bill.
As I say, it wasn't designed for the towns, it was designed for the cities.
If, if, if the board would prefer, instead of going forward with the tax cap, to go forward with a, a, call it a consensus of the citizens, a warrant article saying, are you in favor of the selectmen bringing forward a tax cap? Um, that's fine with me as well. Then that takes all this argument out of, and if the citizen's in favor of it, then it's up to this board or the next board to-
Decide what to do.
Decide what to do.
Let me ask this, in the way that this is worded, the selectmen and the budget committee can't raise the taxes, you can't raise the rate the taxes were accrued from the prior year?
No, ac- actually, it's only the budget committee.
Okay.
Because the budget is only put together by the budget committee, we give them recommendations and it's up to the budget committee to, uh, adhere to, if there was a tax cap in place, the tax cap.
So essentially, anything that would override that, or exceed that amount, would have to go on warrant?
Would-
Well, that's how you, right, you put stuff on warrant.
So it really doesn't limit it?
No, that's what I've been saying all along.
You've, you've hit upon, I mean, in, in, in some ways, in some ways, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a gimmick for how you budget, because you're exactly right. You set a threshold, I mean, it, it, you know, arguably, it forces you in the early stages of what you do here and what the budget committee does to kind of prioritize what fits within that number. It forces out, okay, these are the things that don't fit under the number, you stick them as a separate warrant article, or people come to the deliberative session and, you know, and propose to add them in, there's no magical like three fifths or two thirds or some of the other things, you know, that traditional overrides have. So you get, you get a dozen people to come to the deliberative session, you put a hundred thousand dollars back in the budget and it goes forward.
I don't mind asking-
How many people?
What?
How many people?
Well, I, I said a dozen, given the low attendance we have, but-
I don't even think a dozen chill out.
I would very well support asking the citizens.
I wouldn't mind asking.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
I wouldn't mind asking them if they want to go-
That's fine to me, if that's the way the board wants to know.
I agree.
So are we back to this, sort of, the kind of language I have in here already, the shall we study? Or, or do you want it more directive than that?
I, I would say, do you want us, do you want the board of selectmen to establish a tax cap?
Or present to the voters.
To present to the voters a tax cap, okay.
Yeah, if you say, "shall study," it gets us another year out. You know, we're studying it this year, yeah, we're gonna go back and say, would you like this influence?
So we, so we're just gonna ask them to present, we're not gonna bother studying it?
No. No, we already-
I mean, no.
It's, it's, the point, the point of fact, Jason, is that you, you have no, um, need to study it. It's, it's simply a matter of adopting the language for a warrant article that the state has already provided you. You're obligated to use the state language for a warrant article to implement a tax cap.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, and I think, I mean, the other day, the, what, what we have to decide, if the voters say, yeah, we would like to see a tax cap, now the issue is, what's that, what's that amount?
Right, and at that point, then you-
What can we live within, knowing what our cost increases are, what the, the natural things are, not the things we bring forward, the natural increases? And what, the rest goes, the rest of the things that fall out, go to warrant, and it's, they stay on their own.
All right.
All right, property of, property sale.
Property sale, I propose this every year and it seems to die every year, but, um-
Rightly so.
This gives the selectmen the authority to, um, acquire or sell land as long as they jump through various hoops to, uh, do this for notification and of planning board, conservation commission and the like. Um, again, not that I have these great plans of the board buying or selling a lot. However, one of the areas where this has come up, where it would be useful to have this authority, is over time, we've acquired a bunch of strange little easements, uh, in developments that have come as a result of various planning board decisions. We have slow easements and we have, things have been granted outright to us that the town owns that we no longer need as property.
Yeah, but nobody's gonna buy swaps.
I know, but we're stuck with-
I guess we could sell them to the conservation committee.
We're, we're stuck with some of these wedges of land that I could draw up and we could all have the joy of explaining all of these little wedges of land at a town meeting for twenty articles, or we could run them here.
There's only, at least, there's only one parcel of land that I am aware of that has any meaningful, um, value to it, and that's the one down on, uh, three A.
Yeah, we're not talking about value, we're talking about nuisance, we're talking about nuisance pieces.
What are you gonna sell it to?
Well, in some cases, getting it off of our books.
Wouldn't this-
To where?
The, the abutting property owners, I don't care if we get it off our books for a buck, if we don't need it.
Wouldn't it-
And it's not worth anything.
What's the matter, though? Whether we own it or the butter owns it.
So, so you sell it to the butter for a dollar and then you charge him, uh, fifty bucks a year and it assesses value?
It's a hell of a good deal for us, why are you complaining?
No, I would argue, well, I would argue that the value is then a dollar.
It, it's not a fair market transaction, we can exclude it. I refer you back to the DRA paperwork earlier.
No, I think this absolutely makes sense because if you, um, excuse me, like, I know we have a bunch of deed of property that we want to get rid of, um, that has been unclaimed and luckily, our town, twenty years ago, adopted this, and they also had in there, as justice may prevail.
But, but, right, that's the tax deed, and we have that authorization.
Okay.
Which is, which is what this town has adopted too, that's why we could unload the other properties we take. This is not property that, that we've acquired by tax deed, this is property we've acquired in other ways.
But the thing is that, uh, the other one also, it doesn't stipulate tax deed.
Ours stipulates tax deed.
Oh.
Ours stipulates tax deed only.
See, ours d- does not, and, and it has the whole provision. So the board of selectmen can turn around and sell any property that, that they own, going through a couple hoops, but, and, and even as justice, quote unquote, as Laura, what's it, may, may serve or prevail. And, and it's certainly a lot, like, we're about to go advertise for probably about twenty-five properties, get them back in the tax rolls.
There, there is one issue that at some point will need to be addressed and that is expansion of the cemetery. And we will have to purchase property for that. Now, I don't know whether that goes through the selectmen for purchase or whether that goes through the, uh, trustees of the cemetery, uh, for purchase, but I do know the town's gonna have to do that at some point.
Unless you-
Yep.
Put the stack in this.
Yeah, we can talk, look towards stacking them, or building a second level.
Can we just turn it over like we do with flower fields?
Um-
Sure.
On, on this one, let, uh, if I can suggest, can we at least keep it alive, I'll keep it alive to the next meeting. I have, I'll give you a couple examples of the, of the kinds of issues I'm trying to address with this.
I think that makes sense.
That way you can kind of see what I'm thinking about?
Keep it alive and we still discuss.
And then we can figure out what we do with it.
Bring us some examples that would, this would help us.
I have, you know, Joan's piled up a few.
If you can get fifty feet back on the tax rolls, that's something.
Yeah, so.
I don't see people jumping nearby.
Um, the-
You never know, if they're the butter, they may.
Uh, all right, am I missing any, am I missing any other non-monetary articles that are of interest to people?
I, I know we solicited, I haven't seen anything else come through, so.
Actually, it's a monetary article.
Oh, well, you missed your chance.
No, it's, what is it?
Well, I think it's an offshoot, John, of what you've been working on, is, should we start to, um, or are we gonna use impact fees for this? So I'm kind of opening this up, in my mind anyways, it's a discussion, for looking at a, um, expansion of the existing fire department, uh, facility down at where it exists now, or for moving this somewhere else in our community, that may make better sense in terms of response times and all of that stuff. So I don't know whether we want to use impact fees for that or we want to go forward and ask for an appropriation to do an engineering on that.
Didn't we already use impact fees to do some of the plans we already have, some of the studies we've already done?
I think the original plans, I know when I came back on board in two thousand and eight, I think the original plans were done by impact fees.
John. Cause we, I mean, there are plans out there.
I guess I don't know which ones, the ones that-
The ones that were done, uh-
For here, no, that was an appropriation.
Oh.
They were done by Chief Skilfill for a building, I call it, next door here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So-called public safety.
Well, actually, that building started out to be down next to the school.
Right, there was one point subsequent to that, I think Steve was in the-
There were also plans for a building to be done here, which I did just be-
There was one thought at one time of putting it actually on the school property, there was another thought then of putting it near where the parking lot is for the Derrick Park.
Right, yeah.
And then there was also, I know there's also land that's owned by the town down on Talon.
Right.
Uh, right, across from Campbell Drive.
The other warrant article we just talked about.
That was the original request for the second fire station was, off of Talon Road, that was done nineteen eighty-eight.
So I know, um, we're obviously, we've, we've been discussing it, we haven't actually talked in depth about it. We pulled the plans out, I know the chief has been looking at it with you, um, yeah, so if the board's supportive of do something like that, I mean, we have to start socializing anyway, one way or the other, if it's just to go up and refresh the plans, engineering, designs and-
I've fully supported it because I, I supported it in nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen-
No, we have to do something, I mean, we're, we're, we're at a crossroads with the station, and, and obviously, you know, if that-
Do something.
It's, we can't replace a truck, when a truck gets replaced, we can't replace a truck, we have no place for it.
Well, look at what's outside.
Well, the only thing we-
We have assets sitting outside.
Wait a second, we could build a top for it.
Uh-huh.
That was discussed at one point, I know.
All right, uh- What we'll do is put an addition onto the existing fire station and then you'd have to basically, um, have it up on top, basically multi-story, and then bring it across for a new roof structure and extend the, uh, the walls on the existing station to give you the headspace.
Well, the challenge with that, though, is then you don't have to, you don't have to drive around, so now you get the issue of the trucks trying to back in and out, versus just pulling in and driving through around.
Well, you'd have, there, there's currently dirt, um-
By the cemetery side?
No, on the, uh, town hall side. And if you took another couple feet of the drive area-
This way, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But then you got all the tanks, there's all kinds of stuff on the ground.
All the tanks.
Oh, you, you'd have, you'd have a, a problem, um, moving stuff, yeah, I agree with that.
And on the north side, there's a drainage.
That-
Pit.
You know, the thing is, we're, if we're gonna ultimately propose something, we need to study all of these scenarios. Cause if we do not study all of those scenarios, I do not want to be standing up. Whatever scenario we choose not to study and discount out of hand will be the one that takes on a life of its own and takes you from a sixty percent vote to a fifty-five percent vote, and then you don't move forward on the project, because-
How about doing a building committee?
So we have one, we have one, it's not part of the CIC, but the, right now, we've been trying to focus on just the regular capital stuff. Buildings, we've been doing the tours now, talking about buildings, fire department is next, our next meeting.
Can, can I take us-
And we know what the issues are there, so.
Can I take us back to-
No.
Two thousand and twelve, November two thousand and twelve, we presented a concept plan for a, uh, an overall view for public safety facility- 2012, November 2012, we presented a concept plan for a, an overall view for public safety facility, looking at needs assessment for what we needed. At that point, it was dusting off the various plans that had been done in the past. Figuring out, what do we need, and then how is that configured? At that time, we weren't, we were looking more here, but also sort of figuring, we can look at all of the rest of it. Just to give you a ballpark, I think that, the approach that we scoped there is probably pretty consistent with still what we need to do in terms of getting outside help. You'll be still, you can look at the other facility, look at the what-ifs there, look at the what-ifs here. The cost that we had was $21,650.
For the study, right?
For the study.
Yeah, okay.
And that'll kick out then, you know, a plan. And this actually ran through, you know, five meetings with the work team, two public meetings. I mean, this scope is pretty consistent with what we're talking about. We have sufficient impact fees, assuming that this cost is still in the ballpark to cover that. So I'd say that raising more money.
But how many, how often can we dip in the impact fees for the same, for the same effort?
You can, you can keep planning, I mean, well, because you haven't built anything, so you, you know. The blunt argument is you planned the wrong thing, so you gotta go back and plan it again.
Voters didn't support it.
Right, exactly, so, right, so I, you know, I don't think there's an issue there, but I guess we do have money for this approach, if we wanna kind of speed up that approach. And I, you know, I'm more than happy to kind of dust off this approach, tweak it a little bit to reflect sort of how our thinking's evolved over two years and try to price it. And if we're bringing in some outside expertise, we can kind of get that running concurrently with some of our other capital work and jumpstart this.
Yes, I agree.
So, if that's kind of the direction you wanna go, I'm happy to dust this off and your timing is good.
I just think we gotta do something and relatively soon have a plan as to where we're gonna go with this.
Yeah, we were kind of talking, we had to have something that we could socialize starting in March. Not that we're gonna get it, but a plan, we can start educating people, cause it has to come up in the next election, the next cycle. Another year, you know, it gives us enough time to, you know, dust the plan off, do the pretty glossies, get it out there, sell it, and hopefully get support for it.
The other, the other thing I'm wondering about is, I know one of the things that we were looking at and having problems with is the storage of records down at the Old Town Hall because of the issues with mold and everything else down there. Do we need to add on somewhere here to create a record storage area?
Um, no. Oh, well, let me rephrase that. We need it, we do not need it for municipal records. We do need to think at some point about police evidence and storage. Municipal records, we're gradually getting, we've gotten a better handle on that. We have some smaller equipment and racking issues we can deal with. Ultimately, we'll be able to have everything back up here. Part of the work we did with King Information Systems a few years ago and our little chipping away at things has been changing the approach we have for records. So a lot of the stuff, the Old Town Hall doesn't necessarily have to stay there. And some of our, we have more than sufficient room here to retain what we need to retain.
But going back to the police department with evidence and all that, I mean, that's a problem over there.
That's, that's a problem, but that's not really the records problem that Frank started with. So I wanna, you know, so I think we've done a pretty good job.
Best space.
You know, you'll notice, you know, if we chip away a couple thousand bucks a year on equipment, we can kind of do it within the operating budget, because we still need more shelves and that sort of thing. If you get a chance to visit Town Clerk's Vault, you'll see kind of the evolution of what we've done. So, um, that said, we do have a growing concern about evidence for police department. We're running out of room to retain some of the stuff that we need to retain. In some cases, we have to retain things for a long time.
Is it records or evidence?
In that, in that case, it's evidence, I'm not, they're great on records. Again, same thing, we, we got a huge amount of record space back from their implementation of the records management strategy that they're putting together with King. So we have that, plus what we're able to do digitally with IMC, we're well, their records room is mine. We don't have any records issues, storage space issues there. It's purely an evidence issue for them.
So, should we look at possibly going forward with some type of ish discussion or whatever for increasing their evidence storage? And I don't know what that looks like. I know we built out the walls here, what, four years ago, five years ago?
But that wasn't the front side of the building, right?
Both front and back.
Yeah.
Um, we, we've talked about it a little bit, um, you know, I'll revisit it again. I don't think we formalized anything, but we talked about, we've talked about, do we put another, you know, another store, some sort of storage unit outside, you know, what, is it, is it under camera, what can be relocated?
Well, it has to be, it has to be climate control too, in some cases.
In some cases it does, in some cases it doesn't. You know, you, you may recall that for inordinate, long period of time, we were renting a storage box outside that was related to.
Yes.
You know, material we had for one case, so. I mean, at the very least, we would probably wanna keep an eye out for a decent storage unit like that, install it, make sure we have.
Well, the last time we went through that, I think it's cheaper to buy one, if I remember correctly.
Oh, we will buy one.
Because we spent that and then some renting this, because we always were being told that the judge was gonna make a decision.
Right, unfortunately, the judge never did, so.
Yes. So, my sense is if we go that route, that's a small enough price tag that I think a warrant article's overkill to ask for a couple thousand dollars for, for that. Um, I'll discuss, I'll discuss with the chief what else we're looking at. I mean, we need to talk about the whole carport thing anyway, so as we talk about all of those pieces, what makes, what makes sense. But I wanna be aware of that.
You're gonna talk about what?
What?
You're gonna talk about what?
The, the carport extension, not the.
The part that we already voted down?
No, because you asked me to go back and study the, the carport.
Sally port.
The Sally port, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, so we'll take a look, we'll take a look at that and then somehow figure out how to make that consistent with the last comments about, you know, whether there is anything intersecting the two when we look at fire station and police station. We kind of have been tap dancing around that, I know the focus here is fire station. You know, again, way at least one at the front end. The study that I proposed before, at least at the front end, started from the overall public safety point of view.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that may drop out, but again, the same question of why didn't you add on to the fire station? How come you didn't plan for police needs? So, you know, the more of those we can answer, the better.
Okay, anything else on warrant articles? Moving on, wastewater study.
Speaking of studies, I'm, guys, I decided earlier this year to do a study for wastewater feasibility. And just wanted to share that this is the RFQ that we've put together. Idea being to try to get responses back by mid-December, to try to pin something down to get, um, get something in, started beginning of next year, so started in January. Wanted to share this in part because, one, to let you know that, A, we haven't forgotten it, it's still moving. But two, we're gonna, you know, once all of this stuff comes in, we actually will need to review this material and selections and interviews and the like, and whether that is the entirety of the board, a subset of the board, none of the board, whatever the preference is, we will need to determine that.
Okay. I think, Frank, you were involved in the creation of the RFQ, right?
Actually, Jason created it, and I did review it, gave him some feedback, which he ignored.
Did he? It would surprise me, but.
He took some of it.
All right, so no action for us now, just to keep us, just keeping us posted, right?
Um, yeah, but, you know, we'll need to pin something down in mid, in mid-December, I mean, you know, I'm happy.
The bottom line is, you gotta decide how you wanna go forward with this.
Right, you know, um.
Well, is this, this is all ready to go, can we just go out and send it out to the vendors and come back?
Yeah, yeah, this part, this part's going out, but when stuff comes back, we're gonna have to figure out a.
What's the process, okay.
We're gonna have to figure out the review process from there. You know, my thought with this too, the good, since, you know, we've wrapped this up, is Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be at the Municipal Association Conference, so my plan is to hand-deliver a few of these to likely, likely bidders as well as posting it, so.
Okay. Does there any communities around that have done, gone through the same kind of exercise? That we can borrow from their process and how they did it?
Um.
No?
Well, I mean, this is a very simple, we don't need to make this harder than it is. I mean, this is meet with firms, make a recommendation. If you all would love to do it, you can.
Well, you asked for a process, I'm just saying, is there a process you'd wanna?
The process, the process is going to be, if the board is willing to delegate that to one or more of its members and staff, then ultimately, if you let the contract, you can take, you can get a recommendation back, or you can all.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought when we brought this old idea up, we basically said you and Frank would work together, cause Frank brought it forward, it's, it's a great idea, and he had the insight already, so I don't think we've changed our opinion on that. Does anybody else in the board wanna be involved in the, in the review of it all?
So, so, let's just talk about for a moment how this goes forward. I think the first thing we should do is consider whether we want to approve the draft that Jason's provided. If we approve the draft that Jason's provided, then that gives him the authority to start to go out and try and get engineering firms who would wanna come in and talk to us. Then the second thing we've gotta do is decide, when those engineering firms come in, somebody, some group or some entity has to review the engineering proposals and make a decision as to who we select as the successful bid door, or bidee.
Okay.
Or bidai do, bidai de, bidai vicky bye. And then that goes forward with them doing the actual study.
All right. I, I will make a motion that we approve the RFQ as presented tonight, as written review.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Here and then.
Yes, this was on the, this was on the warrant last year, correct?
For us to go forward with the study, yeah.
Cause what you were asking for is if they wanted us to go forward with the study?
No, last year, I think there was.
It was two years ago.
I'm just trying to make sure.
Two years ago.
It was two years ago.
It was a 10,000, was it 10,000? Yeah, $10,000, because we were going to combine that with 16,000 that the town already has for economic development. And it was.
That's right.
It was voted down by the citizens.
Okay, so now we're gonna put this forward to do it?
The Board of Selectmen voted to move this forward, yeah.
Using economic development money that we had in hand, that we were using before.
And there is a citizen in town who is willing to fund the residual part of this.
To match it.
To match it.
Right, so we were no longer using.
And that should cover the, that should cover.
That should cover the full cost of it, yeah, we weren't dipping into any, any tax money.
I thought I remembered it being voted down.
It was voted down.
Okay, two years ago. Okay, further discussion? Here and then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries 500. So for the vetting team, I'd make a, I'd make a motion that we appoint Selectman Frank Byron and Town Administrator Jason Hope to be the core team. I also, hang on, I have to suggest that we engage both our road agent, actually just the road agent.
Don't hold on to the motion, I'll second it.
No, no, you took too long, he's got it now.
Okay. Motion made in second, a discussion. Sorry. I wanted to finish my, my thought.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Upstalts.
Motion, see, motion carries 401, with Frank Byron abstaining.
You take it too long now, see?
I am, sorry.
We're voting before you.
All right, next on the agenda.
Are you okay with this, Jason?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. There may be a point where, you know, depending on who we have bidding, I may ask for another set of eyes. My difficulty honestly is I've worked closely with a number of these likely firms over the years.
I'm aware of that, and that's why I suggested that our road agent, Jeff, could be involved also, to be the other side of it.
Yeah.
Especially with his construction knowledge and the, and the industry knowledge.
Yep.
All right, uh, next is, we're moving to other items, playground inspection.
Uh, short and sweet, just to point out, one of the services we get from Property Liability Trust are playground inspections. They came through, no additional charge, made some recommendations, rec commissions acting on them, nothing that this board has to do. I just wanted to point out that those have been shared, and I shared them with you, they're, they're good documents they put together.
Yep.
The, what do they call it, loss committee?
Yes.
That's had a procedure in place to require the inspection of playgrounds annually? Has that been done?
Um, it has been now.
I was at the recreation meeting, and the discussion came around, have the playgrounds been inspected? I posed a question to Jason and Kevin, in a joint effort, the two of them got the inspections done. We then, as soon as we got the information back, I brought it back to the, well, the Recreation Commission got them as well as I did. I made the recommendation at the last meeting to correct the issues. The biggest issue that you'll find in, in there is that the swing setup at Jeff Lane was, I guess it's dangerous, because there's no real concrete pads holding the posts in, the swings were all messed up. And so they cut them down. And now we've also set part of a plan to re-bachmulch all the areas that needed appropriate thickness, cause that was the next biggest issue that we had, is not appropriate padding on the structures.
Right, but, but there was a, there's a committee that's run by Chief O'Brien that required inspections annually. And if Jason and Kevin had done the inspections, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. Somebody's gotta do them, but those inspections should go to the chief as part of his committee reports, that's all I'm saying.
So it's a joint loss management?
Yeah, exactly, Joint Loss Management Committee.
Yeah, and that, that is appropriate.
It is.
Renewed for it to go to.
And, and that would be, and, and Kevin will be making sure the joint loss is brought up to speed, cause that's, cause he serves as our, he serves as our rep on that, so.
Kevin's actually also overseeing the upgrades to the areas to make sure that they comply, and Jack is doing a great job of helping us out as well. So.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on playground inspections?
No.
All right, ahead of this is other business, but you did put it here under your items, so lobby collection?
Uh, yes, I had a chat today with Pat Jewitt, who has, is looking to spearhead an effort to collect socks for seniors in nursing homes and other facilities. And she had seen that there was a need for that. So as Pat has done in the past, looking to have a lobby collection box, and that we have always supported.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yep.
Can we just make a proclamation, motion that says, whatever Pat Jewitt would like to do in aid of seniors, citizens of Litchfield, if she wants to use this facility, we just say, go at it. Just let us know so we can advertise it for her. Versus her coming to us every time she has a, an idea, I mean, she does a lot, and I think she's, I know she wants to continue doing it as much as she can, and I, I just, I don't associate her coming every time.
I think, though, this is a good advertisement to air each one of them, and to make sure that people know about it, whereas if.
And I'm not suggesting, I, I might, like I said, have, let us know about it, but let's make sure she knows that she has our support, and if she wants to do, you know, for the vets, for the homeless, for the, it doesn't matter. If she's running it, she can do it. This is my, my thought, I mean, I, I'm all for this anyway, period, but I'd just like to let her know that she's got our support going forward. It's not that, you know, have any headache or that we won't say yes, we'll say yes.
I think it should be taken on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the town hall lobby for, by Patricia Jewitt for the collection for socks for seniors.
um, for the collection for socks for seniors, as well as, um, any collection she would like to do for Christmas for soldiers, if that were to come up.
Second.
Yep. Okay. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained, motion carries five zero zero. She does great work, so.
Now, can I divert here for a quick second? I did get a Facebook post notice from, um, Laura Gandia concerning Pat Jewitt Day coming up, and there was something that was done about the Selectmen, I think, or participating in something coming March.
I haven't seen-
And I just wanted to kinda bring this up, because I saw this just come out recently.
I haven't seen anything from Laura since we made the proclamation and-
She spoke to us months ago about setting aside a date in the beginning of March.
It's her birthday in March, it's-
Right, yeah.
That I know, I haven't seen what the plans are for that, I know-
And that's, and right now, it is that that date is, is on the calendar, and that's all we have.
But there's, I mean, I understand the way we're, we're gonna recognize volunteerism in the community. I haven't seen anything from her with regards to the process, the, how do you, how do you rec, how do you recommend somebody?
Right.
Has she, okay, so-
No, and, and, no, that, the, the, none of that has been established, the, the March date was established back this summer.
Yeah.
Uh, and the new, we, we've confirmed, um, having the school available to us on March first.
Okay.
So.
Can we, can we reach out to her and, and, first of all, see if she's still engaged to help us organize that first event? It sounds like she is, or she's reached out to you, she hasn't reached out to me. Um, and like I said, what's, what is going to be the selection, you know, criteria? Because with Deliberative coming up, there's a, there's good opportunities to kinda get that stuff out there.
It will be March before we know it.
Reason I'm bringing it up is I just didn't want this to get to March and be a surprise, if you, if you understand.
I agree with you. Did she send, put out an event, or did she send you a private message?
I, to be perfectly honest with you, don't remember.
Okay. Let's, let's ping her and see what she's got going, what's going on. Hey, anything else? Alright, Selectmen Reports. Mr. Perry?
Um, you wanted to talk about the Conservation Commission coming into the Rec Department, correct?
No, I, I, my question was asked, I didn't answer it, I guess.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I'll just, I, I just saw you-
Just as-
Was that a conservation meeting, yeah, go ahead.
Just as clarification, Mike Croto came in from the Conservation Commission, asking about the Rec Department, if they had any desire in helping out with the milfoil treatments that were going on down at Dara. Long discussion, continued on through it, basically, in the end, the Rec Commission said they see it as a recreational asset as well. They wanted to take part in the effort of being proactive in cleaning up the milfoil as well. Even though they didn't have anything back from the treatment that helped this year, they committed to taking care of a year's worth of the funding of the three-step program that they believed was to be initiated. So, instead of trying to separate it as half and half between the two years, I recommended to just pick the latter year. And that was what they agreed to do, was pick up one of those payments. But in talking to Jason afterwards, until we get that report back, we don't even know if we can do it again this year or not.
Yeah, I, and I think the reason why I asked the question, I was, I was just surprised, 'cause I heard, I was at the commission, the Conservation Commission's meeting last week, and it came up, and I listened, and I didn't know about the context of it, and I just was surprised that, I thought we, you know, changed the structure of the Conservation's funding and all that, so they could pay for these services versus going back to the tax base, and I don't necessarily agree that Dara Pond is a recreation asset. I mean, I, it is an asset of the town, but it's-
People fish there, people swim there, that was their theory.
But Conservation controls what people are doing in there too, I just, to me, that, that's where the, it just feel the milfoil should've came out of that, but if, if people are happy doing it that way, it's fine, I don't have objections either way, I just thought it was weird.
It, it may take many more years than three to, to get all the steps produced, anyway. But until we get a-
Yeah, I just, well, I just would observe, the plan that we all thought was going forward of do a third, a third, a third, not, not happening. Uh, the state permit this year wants to see a long-term management strategy, which does not necessarily include pesticide spraying every year. So, expect next year Conservation's gonna do a draw, a more detailed plan, we may have to go through and try some other things too. So, this notion of spending equal thirds each year, this, this may be an academic point for who's sharing what cost in two years.
Exactly. But that was, that was where it came from.
Okay. Alright, anything else, Steve?
No, the only other thing from the Recreation was the playgrounds, which we've already talked about. The inspections that came back that we have been proactively trying to fix.
Alright, Mr. Byron?
Yeah, I've got two Budget Committee meetings to talk about, I'm not gonna go over the questions and presentations portion, I'll just go over the voting, if that makes the most sense. So, at the Budget Committee meeting of October thirtieth, the Board of Selectmen were salaries, um, there was motion to cut them to zero, that failed, as a motion. The, uh, Town Administrator's salary was motioned to cut to ninety thousand dollars, that also failed. Okay. Town meeting, the election supplies was, uh, limited to a hundred dollars, that passed. Town clerk with no changes. Accounting, um, seminars, um, was decreased to two hundred dollars, that passed. IT, they removed twelve thousand dollar stipend for the IT manager, that motion passed five to three. Tax collection and legal, there were no changes. Advertising, there was a motion to remove, uh, membership in New Hampshire Municipal Association, that failed. Uh, street lighting, uh, there was no changes, sanitation, there were no changes. Uh, welfare, they reduced housing to nine thousand dollars. Um, was it nine thousand?
I think so, I think overall, it was like twenty-five hundred out of that.
Thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, I think it was to nine thousand dollars, and that passed. And patriotic purposes, as well as debt, there was no change. At the Budget Committee meeting of the sixth of November, there was a, um, let's see here. The, uh, Planning Board, um, budget, um, the, was cut, line three ninety-two, which is the, uh, line for the, um, circuit rider, was cut by a thousand dollars. There was a, um, um, motion to reduce, I don't have it in front of me, I just copied the line items down. Um, line three twenty-nine to zero dollars, that passed.
That was recording fees, I think.
That's recording fees, it was fifty dollars, as I recollect it. Motion to cut line six twenty-five by a hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty, that passed.
What line is that?
Hold on a sec.
Just curious of-
I think that's something like postage, or, or something, some sort of supplies line. Um, let's see, hold on a second here. Uh, that was postage, yes.
The Budget Committee on forty-one ninety-one dot three, which is zoning, um, they moved line eight eleven to decrease it by seventy dollars to a hundred dollars, that passed.
That's a seminars line.
Seminars line, government buildings, they, uh, motioned to reduce line six thirty-five by three thousand dollars, that passed. If you can pick out these lines for me, Jason, to be-
That's gasoline.
That's gasoline, they reduced it by three thousand dollars, because the feeling was that, um, we're now in the long-term trend of having gas prices are gonna stay low. They motioned, uh, line four eleven to reduce that by a thousand dollars, that passed.
That's, oh, that's propane.
Okay. On cemeteries, they motioned, uh, line six fifty to reduce it by six hundred and sixty-five dollars, that passed.
Groundskeeping.
Ambulance, nothing was done, on fire. They motioned line one twenty to reduce it by five thousand dollars, that's, uh, training.
No, that's, uh, one twenty's call firefighter wages.
That's call firefighter. Then they motioned line one forty to reduce it by a thousand dollars, that passed.
Uh, that's, um, firefighter overtime.
And they motioned line one twenty-seven to reduce it by two thousand dollars, and it was eventually amended to reduce it by five thousand dollars, and the five thousand dollars passed.
And that's the, uh, training wages line.
So they reduced training by five thousand on fire department.
What? Okay.
Uh, hydrants, they reduced it to two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three oh, three oh eight, which is the number that Jason had provided earlier.
That was the updated estimate.
That, that's the corrected number, so that's-
On code enforcement, emergency management, and health, nothing was done. Conservation Commission, uh, line four thirty, they increased it to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Originally, the Board of Selectmen had, uh, they, they proposed to increase it to seven fifty, it was eventually amended to increase it only to one hundred. And that was the property management line, and that passed seven to two.
What's a hundred dollars gonna do?
There was a feeling on the part of the Budget-
Be symbolic?
Right, there was a feeling on the part of the Budget Committee that money, the citizens expected that the Conservation Commission Fund, where there's money that they're using to purchase properties, should be used only for the purchase of properties, and shouldn't be used for the management of properties.
But a hundred dollars isn't gonna manage anything.
No, well, the, the, the first conversation was restoring to the seven fifty. Um, and then because we hadn't charged anything to that line the past two years, um, and in part because some of the things we've done have been sort of the brush hogging that the rental that we shared with Jack, so because I didn't artificially divide, divided up to charge this department, we were penalized for not having a history. Um, so, um, then, so the seven fifty went back to a hundred.
So, it, it, those are, that's the report of the Budget Committee meetings, there's a Budget Committee meeting coming up on Thursday, where I'm assuming they'll again go through additional budgets and make changes to those budgets. Um, it does raise the question, though, Mr. Chairman, as to whether, um, right now, you would like to ca, you would like a warrant article to go forward, which is a non-monetary warrant article, that would clarify what the Conservation Commission Fund would use, be used for, if you follow my drift. In other words, should it be used for property management? Or should, in the other, in the other case, not be used for property management, and they would have to have a budget established in order to do that?
Is that governed by RSA?
RSA currently says that the Conservation Commission Fund may be used for any items, any purpose that's in the RSA chapter that defines the whole Conservation Commission. So basically, any, in my read of it, anything the Conservation Commission does could technically come out of the Conservation Commission Fund. Now, I know Conservation, I'll speak on their behalf, has a problem with that, and in fact, they came to us and asked us to accept the, um, legal fees that were associated with the purchase of the property that we just did. Um, and I do know that they have a concern, um, and my understanding, I don't know who the Selektmen's rep is on that, yeah, they, they were gonna come and, and I guess propose a, a warrant article, maybe to, um, have management fees as a budget line, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't heard that yet, but-
But now, on, on that warrant, would that be considered a repurposing, and have to go through a two-thirds majority?
Uh, no, because it's not a capital reserve. It, it's its own separate fund, so it's not subject to those rules. We, we cle, we, we clarified it last year, that, because once upon a time, it, it's, it was created, if you remember the trajectory we had last year was, it was created as Conservation Fund under the full ar, auspices of the RSA. It then changed its name over time to be Conservation and Land Acquisition Fund. Deposits were made into it, is it, under that name, so the argument was, hey, voters probably thought it was for land, land acquisition. So we asked last year, and the voters supported, okay, it's available for all purposes allowed under the law. So now what we're suggesting is, are we now going to go back and re-limit it again in some form or fashion?
Or clarify, I don't care how you do it.
Like it was before, you know, it, all purposes under the law, except for these. Um, and we-
See, see, right, right now, um, there's multiple sides of this whole story. Conservation Commission believes it should be, I would, again, maybe you, John, better speak to it than I, but I believe that they would believe, they would think that the fund should only be used for outright purchase of property.
I agree with that, yeah.
The Budget Committee, at least one member of the Budget Committee felt the same way, and, and apparently by the vote, when they put a hundred dollars into the budget, the majority of the Budget Committee felt that way as well. And I guess the question is, rather than bat this ball around, get it clarified, is all I'm suggesting, and now would be a perfect time, if the board wished to do that, is to get it clarified through a warrant article, that's all. I don't care whether the board does it or doesn't do it.
And, and to be fair, you may recall that we pulled this out this current year, as well as the proposed, but if, you know, one of the very few things that we discussed in great depth with, amongst, amongst all of us, earlier this year, was there was a feeling of, some on the board, I think Selectman Byron included, that the entirety of the Conservation Commission budget could be charged to the fund.
Right.
And we had a discussion back and forth about that. Um, and, you know, ultimately, ultimately, we split the difference here, because in the grand scheme of things, we, we were talking about seven hundred and fifty dollars in a five-point-two-million-dollar budget. And, you know, uh, getting a legal clarification on is the set, is, is the seven fifty allowed or not allowed, I would spend, you know, ten percent of this whole budget answering that question, it seemed like-
It's not worth it.
It wasn't worth the effort to pursue, but it keeps bubbling back up in some form or fashion.
So all, all, yeah, and the only reason I bring it up is I'm just pointing out to the board that this was a discussion, and still, it is an issue that people-
I don't have a problem with it, if it makes sense, or that they, if the group wants it, I'm okay with it.
And if you look at the presentation that was done, uh, at Deliberative, it's pretty clear in the presentation that was laid out there is the fund could be used for any purposes that the Conservation Commission would be involved in.
Well, with a hundred dollars in their line to maintain the properties and all that, I mean, they're gonna have to use the fund anyway, if they wanna do anything.
Probably, but I think the question's gonna come up, um, that if they want to do, um, I would, I could foresee next year, the Conservation Commission coming back and saying, look, we don't think that the Conservation Commission Fund should have to pay for the milfoil eradication program, and it should come back into the budget for the town. Which is either here nor there, but-
I disagree there, that's all.
So, it sounds like, I mean, can we put together the wording for a warrant article, and?
What, what are we asking, are we reversing the very thing we asked this year?
Well, it sounds like we're looking to clarify it, right?
I'm asking the question, should we clarify it, that's all I'm asking. You know, right now, my interpretation, and it's only my interpretation of state law, is that we, um, as a town, have authorized that the Conservation can use that for fun, for their fund, for purposes, any purposes that they have as a commission. I don't understand why it's an issue, but apparently it is an issue for some folks.
Well, so if we've done that, then why don't we just leave it as is, and let them deal with it?
Jason, looks like he's either trying to catch flies, or?
I, just, I guess, we just went through an exercise asking the voters to go one direction, to present something that muddles the issue one year later, I'm not sure we're fairly serving the voters, it sounds to me like-
The voters approved what, then?
They approved full, full use under the law, period.
Okay.
If there is a difference in interpretation, I think the various political bodies need to be, and not drag town meeting back into it again.
But then why is the Budget Committee believe it's not appropriate?
Because the Budget Committee's interpretation of the vote of the citizens was that they thought that the citizens only voted to allow the Conservation Commission to utilize the funds strictly and solely for the purpose of purchasing property, for Conservation-
It really doesn't matter, 'cause they only gave them a hundred bucks, so-
Oh, I know, they still-
Essentially, they went our way, anyway.
Yeah, I'm not proposing that we change, or fight the issue with the Budget Committee, I'm just raising this to make sure that everybody's on board with where it stands now, that's all.
Okay, I'm also.
Alright, then we're good to go, waiters?
Now, the question I, I would like to, I would, though, like to ask the, the Board of Selectmen, is currently, the stipend that was profo, proposed, and I'm bringing this up because our chairman, um, I know, has held this as a hands-off position, and I respect him for that. But I wanna bring it up as, what do we wanna do as a board? They removed that twelve thousand dollars from the stipend. We can go forward as a warrant article, one. Two, we could ask that be put back into the budget and start to utilize the, or utilize the line for external sources or whatever. I, it's up, I don't know.
I think we should make a contract with John to do it. Otherwise, you're gonna make a contract with somebody to do it. So if we go to the outside source that we were using, or that we use partially now, you'd be drawing up a contract, correct? How would you not be protected in the same way if we did that with John?
How would we not be protected in the same way?
I mean, 'cause if the fear is that we're exposed, a contract would cover it.
No, I'm just saying that-
The only real question is that, is there any issue by being in a contract with somebody about being Selectman and all that? That's the only thing that we'd have to get answered.
Well, that's a whole separate issue that has brought up.
Yeah, but I think we're gonna do something like that, Steve. We just ran through the process, and we just ran through the road agent thing as far as who's the best candidate. So we're signing a contract with, with John. If, if you wanna do something like that moving forward as far as having somebody in there, then we'd have to go through that process, right?
Why? Not that I'm hands-off, but just, but that's basically, that's basically, that's basically-
I just brought that up.
That's, that's eight years of me doing the job free-
I agree.
Spending countless hours rebuilding and working in this, in the different various departments and now saying, well, you know what, John? Screw you.
Johnny, it's nothing against you, I can tell you what I've done at the fire department. And I haven't gotten any, anything, so I'm in the same game. You opted to volunteer your time for, for, for the-
When you respond to a fire, you get paid as a call firefighter.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the work that I've done at the fire department.
No, I know, but when you call, when you work as a call firefighter, you get paid. When I work as an IT guy, the, this Board thought it was fair to pay me.
I have no problem paying.
Now, what I'm saying is, I hate to say it, and I'll say it again, but the tone and the wording that was said during the meetings that I attended and heard were not about the twelve thousand dollars, it's about me.
Right.
So maybe the best thing for me to do is just to step aside and say, I will no longer serve as the IT guy for this community. And you can go ahead and engage the company that's already been engaged and start paying their hourly fees. That, if that's, if that's what the members of the Budget Committee want, then maybe that's what I should do. And it's no skin off my back.
Well, wait a second, though. To a point, if you don't do the job, it's gonna cost us somewhere between thirty to sixty thousand dollars to do this job.
It's gonna cost a lot more money, absolutely.
Okay, well, let's go, let's go safe, sixty thousand dollars.
That's what I proposed to amend it.
So if we go ahead and do that, we would be signing a contract with somebody to pay sixty thousand dollars.
I agree.
Are we allowing the Budget Committee to run this town? 'Cause if we are, we're gonna tell John that he needs to step aside, and we're gonna spend sixty grand, minimum.
The other option is you put in the warrant article.
And what if it fails? We'll just say screw IT for a year and just not do it?
No, we can't, we can't afford to.
At some point, there has to be something that gets done.
Well, I would agree with entering into a contractual agreement with John.
That's where, that's-
At a certain amount of money.
That, and it isn't the same, because it's not like going from an elected to a- A point, I, I understand what you, what you're, where, where you may feel.
I have no issue with, with John.
Yeah, but it isn't, it is, you're, you're-
I truly don't.
You're just entering into a contractual agreement with someone that is doing the task.
I, I guess my question is, if, if that's the route we're gonna go, right? What would determine the contract be?
Well, that would have to be, that would have to be decided.
Yeah, so. But again, John, I, I know the work that you do for the town, and it's greatly appreciated, so.
I take exception to the way that the Budget Committee dealt with that. I think that that was short-sighted, I think it was a personality issue. And they should be, you know, put on notice that, you know, they're preparing, they're supposed to be preparing a budget in the best interests of the town, not a best, best interests of personal emotions that may be involved on that board.
I, I guess my question really is, is there some action that the Board wants me to take at the Budget Committee? To, on this whole issue?
I don't know what you're gonna do to convince them otherwise.
Well, I-
It seems like they're pretty loud and clear.
My, my only thinking was, we, we as a Board either go forward with a warrant article or we motion to move it into another line. But if you move it into another line, they're just gonna take it out again.
Possible. The, my only concern is if you put it as a warrant, what, what, the recommendation vote would be no different than if you added it in the line with the Budget Committee.
But I think-
So you're starting off basically in the same-
And if you put it as a warrant article and it gets voted down, how do you handle IT?
Right, 'cause no means no.
No means no, but that, at some point, that line item's gonna have to go up to that sixty thousand dollars.
I mean, if you wanna get, if you wanna get it done for nothing, if it gets voted down, I'll give it a shot, but I don't know what I'm doing.
Oh, boy. That'll work.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? I mean, at what point do you have to stop and say, we make the rules? 'Cause sometimes you have to. This is not something we can take a risk with being voted down. We either have to make a decision to sign a contract with John or with a different company. One of those two things has to happen. Because they took the money out of it.
I agree with you, Steve. In that way, signing a contract would-
It doesn't magically, it doesn't magically bring the money back.
No, no, but it re- would require us to pay, and if they wanna-
So even with the contract, that money's gonna come somewhere.
Contractual obligation doesn't automatically go into the budget?
No.
So that would have to be pulled in.
It goes into a default budget.
It goes in, it goes into a default budget, but it doesn't go into a proposed budget. They can choose to, on a specific line, not, not recognize the terms of a contract and say, okay, we're gonna take that out, hey, Selectmen, if you think it's important, you find a way to pay for it elsewhere.
And that was in fact being done and proposed by a motion in terms of-
I witnessed my own contract.
The money that they had decided to move down to was below the contract that Mr. Hoke has with the town.
See, that's an item that the Budget Committee really, they're, they're losing sight of their focus.
They voted that down, so that failed the committee, so just to make sure you understand.
And I, and I appreciate the people who voted no on that, because that's not their purview. That is not their purview.
Apparently, they wanna run the town through the budget.
Well, it, basically, you do, but the problem is, you, you hope that, that the decisions that are being made are made in the best interest of everybody involved, not just personalities. You know, not just considering personalities of people taking votes. And I think that's, that's sad, their charge is to produce a budget. It's reasonable and, gee.
So-
All right, let's move.
So what are we doing?
I'll make a motion that we enter into a contractual agreement with the current IT provider.
Second.
All those, or discussion?
Before you go down that path, John?
Yep.
You look like you're gonna say something, so.
No, I, I just, this is, this is tough, because the more we push them, the more they, they come after me. And that's what bothers me.
At the end of the day, you just need to be the better guy, you know, and-
I, well, I, I am, I didn't get up and just walk away, I'm not planning on doing that. And I guess, you know, 'cause everyone's, all your points are valid. I take it as a slap, because I've done it for such a long time. And yes, this Board graciously decided to give me something for the work I've done. And, and recognizing that of next, over the next several years, up to five years, you've got to do something different anyway. And so let's figure out how do we slowly get there. And they said no, and it became a personal thing. It became about me, not about the job that I've already been performing and the fact that if you were here back prior to this, the things that were broken and not working, even before Jason started, the outage, the data loss, all the crap that happened, it doesn't happen anymore.
Like, ah, you've done it.
So I know, I just jinxed myself, but-
My computer just died.
That's 'cause your battery died. But I just, you know, I just, I, I continue to think it's about me, and it's like, I don't know why it's about, why it should be about me.
Well, it shouldn't be.
I've not been benefiting from it. Matter of fact, if you ask my wife, she'd tell me to drop, run away as quick as I can. But I won't, I can't, I won't, but they're gonna force me at some point. So there is a motion, there's a motion-
My motion stands.
There's a motion and a second, and it's, I'm comfortable this is, is any more discussion. Only I'll say is, this action is just gonna push them, they'll just do something different.
That's fine, so we're gonna do something to it.
What are they gonna do, not fund the line that they didn't fund?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they will.
They will just not fund it. You can go into a contract with me, and you're not gonna be able to pay for it. And I am not gonna ma- I'm not gonna allow the Board to take it from someplace else. That's just not right, we have, we have, we have employees who haven't got raises, there's a whole bunch of little factors and priorities around here that I'm just not going to do.
So why don't we just throw it at them? Have Jason go out and find a contract service and throw the sixty thousand dollars at them and see what they think of that?
That, that proposal was actually made-
I can get you a contract tomorrow for six thousand.
I, I made a proposal that we, we changed the line item for the, um, computer services that we use, which was currently six thousand dollars. And we bring that up to sixty thousand, by, up to sixty thousand. And that motion was actually not seconded. And I had actually said something at that point in the meeting to Mr. Hoke on a, I think, a totally different subject. It was chuckling about it, and I was accused of laughing about the motion, so therefore they wouldn't second it.
Oh, God, I don't know.
I mean, intensely, that's what you're gonna be doing, if, if you go get it, I just don't, sixty thousand dollars is a huge increase.
Absolutely, it is.
Well, I think, and, and it's been my opinion along, all along, John, that, you know, I appreciate everything you do in terms of the IT and stuff, but at some point, because the town is gonna have to face this at a point in the future anyways, somehow we should, you should start backing out of this function and, and turn it over to a bona fide contractor who fills that role and, and, you know? And I'm, I'm saying that simply because the reality's gonna be there in years, some years ahead, where you're not gonna run for election, you're not gonna wanna do this anymore, you're gonna wanna do other things. And I think the town's gonna have to face up to that, and the sooner they realize that, I think the better we all are.
Right, but I agree that we can handle that in a contract with John to provide an escalator to bring it up. Because, I mean, it, it's absolutely insane to me that we have a perfectly good running system, that they just wanna say, oh, it's not gonna work now.
Well, the, the problem's-
It's, that's foolish.
You know, you can generate a contract, and I think as John has even said himself, at the end of the day, it probably will not be recognized, and I think Jason would back me up on that.
So we have hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of assets that are currently being managed by John. And if he wanted to be a sticking point about the fact that they won't give him something instead of paying a larger amount, it could all go to waste.
The way I see it, yes.
So apparently, apparently sixty's not good, twelve's not good, zero's good. But zero's only good if John does it, because he's not good enough for twelve.
We're, we're half the size of this town, and we pay twenty-six thousand dollars a year for IT services. Half the size.
The other option is we make a motion during deliberative. To add it in.
At that point, if we make that motion, that, to prove the term, right?
Yes, I like that.
If it passes, it's, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I just, I'm with you.
I can't see how, I just don't understand that. It's such a small number compared to-
Fifty thousand. He can control hundreds of thousand dollars' worth of assets, as long as he does it for nothing. And if he walks away, we're gonna have to be footing a bill of up to sixty to a hundred grand that we're gonna have to find.
And I think where this all comes from is, like you said, he's done it for so long for nothing, right?
I only ran as a Board, 'cause I was totally couldn't do it unless I was a Board member. And now that's a conflict. So. I, and I don't believe that's the case, by the way.
I think what Frank said, you know, make a motion at deliberative to try and get it in there. Otherwise, I mean, if we sign that contract, like you said, they're just gonna take it up, right?
It's already up.
Well, that's what I mean, but, I mean, it's, so even with us.
Yeah, I mean, whether we sign a contract or not, I think is irrelevant.
Right, right.
And, you know, the only, the only alternative you have is, I think, is, like I said, either a warrant article or-
I like the deliberative route.
Deliberative.
Well, I, you okay with drawing the motion, Steve, or you wanna still go? I mean, if it's, I, I don't wanna, if it's gonna be a mood issue?
I, I, I actually haven't been this frustrated or aggravated, however you really wanna word it, about anything I've ever done at this table as much as this bugs me.
No, I've seen me aggravated pretty much.
And me, and me one time.
And, and it's, I can't even translate into words how I would feel if I was sitting two seats over.
Oh, I, no, I'm not happy with the committee I used to serve on. I think they lost their mission.
I mean, I would think on the warrant, on the warrant end of it, anybody, I guess, in my eyes, the way that I look at it, I mean, it's no-brainer, in my eyes, you know, but you take that chance of a failing, you're nothing.
So what do you wanna do?
Well, it doesn't sound like we'll get that, the support that we were first seeking.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second, but we need to do something, as long as we push forward in deliberative.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else from the Budget Committee?
No, that's about it. The budget will be wrapped up for the town, what, not next meeting, with the meeting after.
Yeah, this week's our last presentation.
And then I think, what's our due date, December sixth, is it?
December eleventh, I think, we're going back to that.
For warrants?
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind in the warrants, yeah.
Is it Thursday night? Good meeting Thursday night?
Yeah.
So next meeting, right? Next is the next meeting, or do we have two meetings in between that date for getting these warrants done?
We should, I think we have two meetings, let me see.
We sh- we have, our next meeting is gonna be on the-
Week of Thanksgiving.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, twelfth, and then we'll have one more in December, I think.
And then we have-
The budget meeting?
Yeah. 'Cause the first is-
And we have December eighth. So, yeah, we'll have, we'll have two meetings with their meeting-
I thought December sixth was the date we had to get the warrants in.
That's Saturday, I'm thinking that's probably not. We're presenting them on December eleventh.
Okay, that's fine, then.
Yeah.
Just as long as we, everybody knows we gotta, two more meetings to get them.
I think our monetary warrants are-
I think the monetary ones are pretty well done, other than, I just gotta wipe them off.
The road one's gonna be a little screwy.
You'll come back to us asking, what did the Board wanna do about the roads again?
He's not going to, 'cause he's got the direction.
No, I know, I got direction, I got interesting-
Jason, one more, and you're gonna cookie cut the rest of them.
I got some interesting direction, which I'm gonna make work.
Here we go.
All right, I guess, Mr. Bork, anything? Mr. Lemire?
Yes.
Anything?
Just wanna thank you gentlemen for the birthday wishes and extend to Mr. Byron, congratulations for his victory at the holes.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
And, and on that matter, by the way, if there's changes, I know Mr. Hoke has spoken to me about legislative changes and one particular in the recount process, but if there's other legislative changes that the Board would like to see, I need to know them ASAP, because the dates for getting in the proposed bills is starting Wednesday.
All right, I just, for me, I just, we had a Capital Improvements Committee meeting this past week. We did, I think we talked about it really early, quickly, earlier. We did do a walk through the highway, walked through all their assets and capital, and we did a recycling center also. And our next meeting will be, the fire department, I believe, is currently looked scheduled. And also a bunch of administrative stuff I gotta get done, so progressing along, members seem to be very engaged, so. All right, moving on, there was no items moved from consent, there was, the other business was covered of- business was covered earlier. That being said, do we have any other activities or actions we need to take as a Board?
No. Informational piece, um, I went to the doctor last week, and I have a hernia that needs to get taken care of, so I do not know when this will happen, just so you know.
Was that from all the posing at the...
If I need to, uh...
Do you want us to do that here?
No.
We can televise, it's an educational thing.
Just so you know, I'll keep you posted as soon as I need to go in and get it taken care of, but if I do need to miss a meeting or something of the sorts, just so you guys know ahead of time.
I was pretty good at that electric doctor game there.
Your head won't explode, your nose won't light up in buzz. All right, well, then that, just as a couple of closing marks, do we have anything else?
If the Board is interested in doing, I had, non-public, for purposes of compensation, I have something posted for that.
We do have something posted, I didn't see it, and...
Yes, sorry, I put it on the agenda, it's on the list of...
That's fine.
I thought you pulled it when I didn't see it on the agenda, I know, I didn't know if it was ready.
Um, it, it, it's ready, the Board can digest it now, or you can opt to discuss it at your next meeting, your choice.
Let's go, let's take five minutes and just look, make sure there's no other issues, and then we'll decide there. So let's go into, um, uh, non-public, um, to RSA ninety-one A...
Uh, three-two A.
Three-two A for compensation. We'll do a roll-call vote. Mr. Bork?
Yes.
Still Lemire?
Yes.
Mr. Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Well, yes, so we'll be going into non-public. Just wanna say a couple things first, to all the vets for tomorrow, thank you for your service. Our next Board meeting will be November twenty-fourth at six PM here, and as you heard, there's a Budget Committee meeting this Thursday, seven o'clock, at the School Resource Room. So again, we'll be, we'll only come back during the meeting, so everybody have a good evening.
Happy Veterans Day.
Yes.